Meeting to order for the evening of June fourteenth. I'm sorry, I believe it's yeah, fourteenth or fifteenth, Tony, you'll have to.
It's the fourteenth.
It is the fourteenth.
You're right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You gotta go with your instincts. All right, we'll go with the instincts. Thank you for that. So we're gonna have a public hearing on our budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, and all of the various subfunds within the budget. Tony, could you please call roll?
Jimenez. Jimenez. Peralas.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Ms. Barza.
Here.
Arenas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Locardo.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. All right, this is a public hearing. This is a time for our public input. So I am going to call from the list of individuals who have joined us from the community who would like to speak. Everyone in the community has two minutes to speak. I see there are many, many attendees in this meeting, and so it may be the case that at some point in the interest of time, we may need to reduce the public comment to ensure that everyone can be heard. But tell you what, we're gonna start out here. It is now six o'clock. At seven o'clock, we'll reevaluate, and at seven o'clock, we may in fact need to curtail the time to ensure that everyone can be heard this evening. So let's start with those who have raised their hands. Welcome to everyone in the community who would like to participate. We want to thank you for your participation. We'll start with Dave Pochel. Dave, welcome.
Hey, good evening. On behalf of Sierra Club Lomo Credit Chapter, I urge you to support Councilmember Carrasco's request for funding to improve the urban tree canopy. I followed the Climate Smart discussion with Ms. Romanow, and I hope it was clear that her ROI calculation for planting trees was based solely on one aspect, carbon sequestration. Unfortunately, Climate Smart does not cover climate adaptation, so it does not evaluate their cooling effect. As someone who grew up in Sacramento, unfortunately, probably our climate future, and with my grandmother's Chico neighborhood built before the advent of air conditioning, I can tell you why Sacramento is known as the city of trees. The Sacramento Metropolitan Utility District can tell you the ROI on trees is good, but trees should be valued for what they holistically contribute to a community rather than being valued for singular benefits. Looking at ozone and particulate pollution reductions, cooling, noise reduction, crime reduction, beautification, and the mental and physical health benefits of trees shows ROI to be very positive. If you do a little searching of the studies, you will have no doubt. While it is an ancient Chinese proverb, it is even more true today. The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second best time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Pancho Guevara, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, took a second to get that. My name is Pancho Guevara. I'm the Executive Director of Sacred Heart Community Service, and and I wanted to just reflect on a year ago, the San Jose City Council heard the voices of community leaders and residents responding to the public murder of George Floyd, asking for the city to begin its journey to understand its complicity in racial injustice and take steps to address them in our community. The Race Equity Action Leadership Coalition has spent the last year working together to interrogate our collective responsibility and opportunities to dismantle structural racism, especially those in our public system such as incarceration and policing. Over the last several months, a coalition of organizations has been has been learning together from various national partners, working to provide guidance on racial justice and equities in prioritization, especially for the American Rescue Plan resources. We've offered some principles for investments, which you've seen, I think, last month, and and we will be presenting an equity investment agenda for recovery signed by over over seventy-seven, I think, over eighty organizations to use as a guide. Really, we think we're given this historic opportunity to make a down payment on fixing some of the conditions that left so many in our community so vulnerable in the first place. This represents a commitment for just recovery for everyone. So we look forward to sharing some of those. There'll be some people speaking this evening and working with you, not only over over this evening, but over the over the next several months, as we prioritize where to put those investments, make sure they're happening in our community, and we're making some some really meaningful opportunities, not just to be able to make investments, but also bring other people into the process, so we're building something better. Thank you.
Thank you, Pancho. Gisela Boucher.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Gisela Boucher. I'm the CEO of Loaves and Fishes Family Kitchen. I'm I'm here tonight to encourage all of you to unanimously support the Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery and the six priorities that are spotlighted in the agenda. I'd like to speak specifically about items number one and four, because they go hand in hand. At this time last year, loaves and fishes served over 1,054,000 meals to homeless and hungry families, children, veterans, seniors, and students. We will end our new fiscal year in another couple of weeks, and we will have served almost 1.5 million meals. Clearly, the impact of the pandemic has not been fully felt, and it's really our opportunity, and I would hate for the city to miss this opportunity, to truly recognize and acknowledge that we have an opportunity to ensure that we we serve the most vulnerable among us across our communities in the areas of childcare supports, food, workforce programs, ensuring that the nonprofit organizations providing these services, and all of many of whom you will hear from tonight, have the resources available to continue to provide their safety net, emergency services, and look with an ongoing equity-focused lens to ensure that we really all turn the corner together as a community and that we don't leave anybody behind. So I would urge you to to take these these recommendations to heart and make them a part of how we move forward as a city, as a community, and as a people who care for all in our community, and that includes the most vulnerable of our neighbors in need. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gisela. Elaine Long, please forgive me if I mispronounced your name, Elaine.
Yes, good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Alene Long, and I've served the city of San Jose for over 11 years, working to protect our sewers, the regional wastewater facility, people's lives, and the South Bay from hazardous waste. During the pandemic, my group and I were were on call on the front lines, serving our community. At the same time, we saw six people leave for better paying jobs from our group. I have a question. How can we expect to recover from COVID and have a functioning city, let alone flourish, without paying the people who provide city services a living wage? The budget is a reflection on the value the city council has for our residents and for city workers. President Biden's American Rescue Plan is sending millions in federal relief to the city of San Jose, and I urge all of our city councils to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Matt Mason.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Matt.
Hi, my name is Matt Mason. I'm the union rep for Local 21, and I'm reading this statement on behalf of Jane Wu, who's a landscape architect for San Jose who couldn't be here tonight. I am proud to lead a team of four dedicated landscape architects at CFAS who implement many park and trail projects, managing millions of dollars of local grant funding. All of the projects require exceptional project management skills, dedication, and a high level of work ethic. Without staff's full dedication to these projects, the residents of San Jose would lose many opportunities to enjoy the outdoors, especially during a pandemic. The importance and demand for outdoor spaces will continue to grow. Our effort and hard work must be acknowledged, and our voices must be heard. It is unacceptable to invest in us less than the police while the inflation rate is soaring. The May 18th, 2021 memo from city managers stated the construction cost index for San Francisco increased 4.7%. Although this inflation rate does not specifically relate to the everyday living expenses for the Bay Area, it certainly does paint a picture of how expensive things are. To give an example, we have an excellent project manager, a single mom of two, who is struggling to make ends meet and is forced to consider moving out of the Bay Area. She loves the job but cannot keep up with the living expenses. It is a shame for the organization to not recognize that our valuable employees are suffering. I hope the city recognizes that the benefits of retaining good staff far outweighs the inefficiencies caused by staff shortage and staff turnover. It's the city's choice to either treat staff fairly and respectfully or treat us like unimportant expendable individuals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Mayor Ron Gonzalez, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Locardo and San Jose City Council members. Pleasure to be with you this evening. I am the president and CEO of the Hispanic Foundation of Silicon Valley, and I'm speaking to you today in behalf of our foundation and the thousands of Latinx students and parents we serve throughout San Jose and throughout Santa Clara County in support of Councilmember Magdalena Carrasco's memo of support for our College Success Center. This partnership between the city of San Jose and our foundation has existed all the way back to the mayor's first year in office as mayor, and we've had a wonderful partnership with both the city of San Jose, the county of Santa Clara, the Santa Clara County Office of Education, and dozens of high-tech organizations and corporations that have funded this important work that we've worked, we've been doing with our students here in San Jose for the last year. It's been a very, very difficult year for a lot of Latinx students and their families, and we're glad that our foundation has been one of the few programs available after school, Saturday mornings, and throughout the summertime, providing essential educational services to those students and their families. So we hope that you will vote to support Councilmember Carrasco's motion or memo, number 101, and so that we can continue our work. Thank you for your time and service to our great city.
Thank you. Stephen Solario.
Hello, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Steve Solorio. I am the current MEF president for the city of San Jose, which is a union that covers over 3,200 staff with the city of San Jose. I'm also an employee for the city of San Jose, and I work in the city's code enforcement department. I'm here to just talk about me as my job. Currently, I spend 75% of my income on rent. I have 25% left to be able to feed two children, which I take care of solely, two teenage boys, and I have a problem making the ends meet. It's time that San Jose has more of a competitive weight and works on taking care of its employees. What did I do all this time during COVID? I put my life out on risk to make sure that the community was safe. I work in the cannabis regulation. I worked every day during COVID, making sure that new locations weren't popping up, making sure that the regulated places were kept safe and were following the rules and regulations. On top of that, I was also asked to do EOC work, and I went into the deepest communities of businesses that were the highest hit COVID areas to make sure people were following rules and regulations. So I hope when you reflect and you look back about approving a budget for city staff, that you're focused on making sure that you're providing the best raise possible for city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Mahaney-Guruhu.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening. I'm Wendy Mahaney-Guruhu, Deputy Chief of Early Learning at First Five, the city's Chair of the Library and Education Commission, and trustee for San Jose Unified School District. First, I want to thank you for supporting the library's Family, Friend, and Neighbor Childcare Workforce Pathways program in your budget memo. Second, I'd like to encourage you to prioritize childcare for the city's children and families by dedicating a portion of the ARP funds to develop programs that primarily benefit children in neighborhoods deeply impacted by COVID-19. Dedicating these funds for the purpose of providing new or expanded services for children such as childcare, learning loss, and social emotional wellness programs would be a huge step in the right direction. We appreciate and have had great partnerships with all of you around the support for children and families and childcare providers in our city, and we really understand that without childcare, there is no recovery for the economy. So we really would encourage you in your budget process to prioritize children, families, and childcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Reyes. Daniel, you appear to be muted right now. If you could please unmute your device, we'll be able to hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
My name is Daniel Reyes, San Jose resident since 1960. Since then, I can remember when a household could survive with the earnings of one parent and buy hamburgers for 19 cents or six for $1 on Fourth Street. Those times are far gone in this valley. Usually, mothers could stay home and attend their children, raise them, and properly provide the golden rules of behavior. Today, not only with the current minimum wages that most minorities earn, both parents work to make ends meet. Those children, under proper care, will have the benefit of not ending in the judicial system and instead be productive citizens in 20 years from now. Fortune is not the employer, the landlords, creditors, or fast food companies that end up with the short end of the stick. It's the children that end up with no proper guidance in the early years of their lives. I'm advocating for the childcare proposal of $10 million that Councilwoman Sylvia Arenas is submitting, and will benefit the increasing learners of our valley. It is long overdue for politicians to consider women, mothers, and sisters' points of view when making family matters policy. Support Sylvia Arenas' proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Julie Jennings is next. Julie, and I just want to apologize to other members of the community. I'm gonna have to step out for several minutes, but Vice Mayor Jones will step in for me. Julie, welcome.
Sure, thank you. So my name is Julie Jennings. I have served the city of San Jose for over 18 years, and I'm currently a Recreation Superintendent responsible for Parks, Recreation, Capital Budget, that oversees both new and renovated parks, community centers, and trails. I would like to address the need for a budget that is equitable for all our diverse essential workers in the city. I would like to address the need for a budget that is equitable for all our diverse essential workers in the city. We cannot give wage increases to police officers and leave behind our recreation and beautification staff, librarians, airport workers, and cleaning crews. Their work is essential and the pandemic has shown how much the community relies upon them. Please note that the budget is a reflection of the values that city council has for our residents and city workers. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Julie. Ali, Ali, Ali?
Hi, my name is Ally Rico. I'm a public information representative for the city of San Jose's Housing Department. I've served for almost two years and I am also a resident of San Jose. I live in D3. As early as March 2nd, 2020, I was activated as part of the Emergency Operations Center to manage the city's social media communications for the pandemic and protests, rolling power outages, and multiple wildfires. In addition to this EOC role, I managed my full-time communications role in the housing department. The EPIO branch of our EOC is a small but mighty team of communicators dedicated to making sure residents are well-informed. They've taken constant criticism and responded with constant improvement of services. But the city as a whole needs even more talented communication staff to continue to deliver these services to our diverse community of over 1 million residents. Fully funding our staff means our city is better equipped to deliver lifesaving information at a speed expected of the capital of Silicon Valley. Our budget needs to be equitable and recognize the diversity of our essential workforce. The current budget leaves behind library staff, park staff, our homeless response team, and hundreds of other essential workers. All of the work we do is essential and valuable and our entire community relies on us. The budget is a reflection of the value the city council has for our residents and our employees. And I'm begging all of you on city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Hi, thank you, Honorable Mayor Locardo, Honorable City Council Members.
Looks like we lost you, Steve.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Go ahead.
Mayor Locardo, Honorable City Council Members. My name is Steve Choi and I've worked for the city for about eight years as a land surveyor and public works. I am also a 30-year resident of District 2 in Santa Teresa and a proud member of Local 21 camp. As a resident, I would first like to thank you all for all that you've done during these past challenging years. I've been impressed with your leadership as you've navigated our city on its roadmap to recovery. However, as an employee, I have to be honest that I feel that the city staff that keep these wheels in motion are unappreciated. Many of my fellow employees sometimes put their own personal safety at risk to provide essential services. They have gone out to the field during the back-to-back summers of record heat, have gone out to the field in the unbreathable smoke of wildfires, and have gone out in the field during torrential rain to monitor site conditions related to potential flooding. These dedicated public servants deserve to know that their efforts are recognized by the council for providing wages that keep up with the high cost of living. We need a budget that is equitable for all our diverse essential workers, not just policing and fire. President Biden's American Rescue Plan is setting 223 million in federal relief to the city of San Jose. I urge all of our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Brian?
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hi, my name is Brian. I'm also one of the vice presidents in AA Local 21. And I've served with the city of San Jose for seven years as a senior engineer. I've been with the Department of Public Works and been responsible for delivering various capital projects, including the recent monitored Brinnell Emergency Housing Project during a pandemic. I believe it's important that we invest in our staff wages, including support, training, recruitment, and retention. I myself have been here for seven years and invested so much. And it's sad that I myself can't buy a home here in the Bay Area. And honestly, you can't expect just a 2% increase. For us, it's enough to keep up with the high costs and various inflation and everything. All we're asking for is approving a budget that takes into consideration of our wages and providing something comparable to the police. Invest in our workers, invest in our city staff, and that way we will be able to continue investing in city services to our neighbors and residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? I'm sorry, Peter?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Peter Ortiz and I'm a trustee for the Santa Clara County Board of Education, as well as a public policy advisor for the Alum Rock Santa Clara Street Business Association. I'm calling in support of the East San Jose Rescue Plan, budget proposal put forth by Councilmember Carrasco and supported by a diverse coalition of grassroots organizations. The proposal touches on several important resources for our community, including an Office of Youth Development, an Art and Cultural District, college readiness support for our East San Jose students, and of course, small business relief, which is one of the main reasons I'm calling this evening. Eastside businesses and their families experienced the worst economic instability in their lifetime during the COVID-19 pandemic. Too many eastside small businesses that have operated for generations have been forced to close their doors for good. This has resulted in massive job loss for our city and communities. We cannot continue to lose valuable resources in East San Jose. Now is the time for our city leaders to take an equity approach in response to the COVID-19 pandemic by supporting small businesses that were greatly impacted. Cities like New Jersey and Philadelphia have taken similar action and implemented programs to provide direct financial relief to local merchants. To accomplish the city's economic recovery strategy, we must prioritize small businesses and economically disadvantaged communities like East San Jose. Please support the East San Jose Rescue Plan in order to save our local economy from crashing. I'd also just want to add a word of support for the workers of the city of San Jose. Please do everything you can to provide them the resources they need to survive here in Silicon Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Hello, can you all hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to prepare something long to speak to you all, but out of respect for all your time, I'll keep it short and simple because I respect all of your intelligence and your capabilities as council members to respect the communities that you all serve and the workers of the communities that we all serve. I am an employee of the city of San Jose for 15 years and I just want to reiterate the issues of unequitable compensation that we're currently experiencing. I think it's no surprise, again, going on the same premise of respect for one another, that you all understand that the current climate and criticism of the police department doesn't come so much of the employees of the police department, but the people who vote to continue to provide such unequitable compensation to them while they don't afford the same compensation to the rest of the city employees providing much-needed services to the communities. I think it's very important for you all to reevaluate your priorities and make sure that you provide some fair compensation and resources to all the essential workers that have been providing essential work to the communities throughout this time. It's not just fire department and PD that have been providing essential services to the communities. There are community centers, dispatchers, library workers, code enforcement people that have all been taking time and risking their lives in such uncertain times and times of COVID. So please put pressure on city management and please consult with your colleagues with one another to make sure that this is known, that you are bolder with your actions instead of your words. Thank you.
Thank you. Blair? Go ahead.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I feel to better develop a blue ribbon task force on the future of Reimagine can help a lot to uplift overall community morale, good feeling, and better reasoning for the next few years. It should be done in ways that task force ideas, thoughts, and practices reach all parts of everyday community as the good examples of our better ideals and practices as individuals and the community. There can be the ideas, these can be the ideas of enlightenment and ideas of hope and better reasoning to address issues of our lives and community. It is from this that more established ideas and logistics of policing can then also be discussed. And as a community, we can work towards the ideas of reimagine together. San Jose City Government seems to be doing a very good job in simply prepare, organize, and include natural disaster preparedness as part of regular city government, public agenda items, and local community planning at this time. These can be the ways to continue the efforts to help better talk about equity, reimagine health, and human services ideas are better human ideals and open democratic practices as a community. Good, decent, idealistic, and realistic preparing now can make transitions out of transitions out of future difficult community situations in the next decade easier, more knowledgeable, and more compassionate in what will be the ongoing questions about COVID-19. There can be a healing process power in good democratic practices. Thanks for all your efforts as a city government at this time and our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Victor?
Good evening. My name is Victor Vazquez. I'm an organizer with Somos Mayfair and resident of San Jose. I'm here to advocate on behalf of families in Mayfair and to support my peers calling for more equitable distribution of resources rooted in racial justice. We have seen the reports in the LA Times that highlight that East San Jose, specifically the Latino community, has been the hardest hit by this pandemic. But also, we've always been hit by the economic injustice that we face and racism. So Somos Mayfair parents surveyed over 300 families and we identified housing, early childcare services, education, and job development opportunities as our top three priorities by both Spanish speakers and non-Spanish speakers. So we're here to support the memo, but also just to highlight that we are in support of alternatives to policing and programs for youth and for children that address the mental health needs of our community. We've seen many, we've seen, or we experienced teenagers suffer and seeing their peers commit suicide. We've seen young people dealing with a lot of stress given their housing situation and everything that's been going on with the pandemic. And it's time for us to really focus on supporting our young people through after-school programs, arts. Even in our survey, people say they want to see self-defense programs, leadership development in East San Jose. We agree that there needs to be kind of a central space to hold this. We also believe that it should not increase any law enforcement. And we need to find a way to work with our local school districts to maximize these efforts. In addition, I would just like to add that we support the small family business development. And we encourage you in future to look at small family business rest civilization programs and commercial opportunities to buy commercial buildings for our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
Hi, this is Heather Cleary. I'm CEO of Peninsula Family Service. And I'm here tonight to support the Real Coalition's Equity and Investment Agenda for Recovery. The Coalition asks that the city spend ARP funding on six funding priorities. And I'm here to highlight the fifth priority, where equity, which calls for an investment in building additional meaningful opportunities for democracy and shared power in our government institutions through empowerment and community engagement. The city should create additional transparent community engagement and seats at the table to center community so we can co-create the future together via citywide engagement policy and staffing of an engagement officer position. Our community knows what it needs, like childcare. But we need to listen and follow through. We have a huge opportunity with these resources. Let's make sure it's the community opportunity. Thank you for your service and your time and attention tonight.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Hi, council members and Vice Mayor Jones and Mayor Sam, who's not on the call. I'm calling today on behalf of the NAACP. I am the Chair of Labor and Economic Development for our San Jose branch. But I'm also calling, speaking for, recounter, our president and Betty, our executive director. Local city workers in Local 21 and MEF have worked tirelessly throughout the pandemic to ensure that programs and services that directly impact our community's health and well-being continue to be made. They deserve a fair and equitable wage to support themselves and their families financially. This investment in public services would not only keep vital services in the city running at their best, but it would serve to stimulate the economy and help recover from the crash caused by the pandemic. The pandemic has relieved, revealed the suffering that so many of my fellow community members, working families, and people of color experiencing. COVID-19 has caused tremendous pain and uncertainty for our residents. The one thing we do know is that we need equitable services provided throughout all of the jurisdictions. Right now, it's hard to do with such a thinly-staffed city. We say we honor frontline workers as heroes during the pandemic, but now is the time to really show that. The budget is a reflection of our values and we have to invest in our public services. And that starts by backfilling vacant positions and giving city staff livable wages. I also want to address the inequity that the community recreation supervisors are experiencing, almost all our community's colors. This has been brought to the NAACP's attention and we will see through that they get an equitable wage along with other city workers in MEF and Local 21. Please keep a lookout for an email that will be coming from the NAACP within the next 24 hours. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Gregory?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Jones and members of the San Jose City Council. I'm Greg Kepferly. I'm the CEO of Catholic Charities of Santa Clara County. And we're members of Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits and the Real Coalition. And on behalf of Catholic Charities, I encourage you to endorse the priorities of the Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery that other speakers have addressed. I'd like to highlight the second of the six priorities for that Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery that calls for investment in solutions that will build wealth rather than just keep people's heads above water. We need to start with children and families first, especially those in neighborhoods most affected by the pandemic and the economic crisis. And we specifically believe that the city should invest in incubating or expanding wealth-building institutions or programs like universal basic income or community land trusts and CDCs and supporting the community college tuition pilots. There's an opportunity for some really creative work with the investment of the American Rescue Plan funds. And this creative work can make a difference for the families and for the children especially, who are so severely affected by the economic crisis. So thank you for listening and we look forward to your support for our agenda.
Thank you. Nihar?
Yeah, hello. Can you, hello?
Loud and clear. We can hear you loud and clear.
Sweet. Hello, and thank you to the city council for hearing my public comment. I'm a member of Sacred Heart's Racial Equity and Community Safety Committee, or REX for short. And we've seen the value and urgency of our public services in times of normalcy, but even more so in times of need. Our frontline city workers have put their lives on the line during the pandemic to provide essential services to our most vulnerable residents, to alleviate hunger, provide educational support for families, respond to medical emergencies, and so much more. It's high time that they get a fair wage, that they feed their families, and to thrive in the city that they provide critical services for. Mayor Locardo has tweeted in the past a quote from Lincoln that essentially says that it's not our words that will be remembered, but our actions. We are calling on you to act at this moment in good faith by voting yes for fair and equitable wages for our city workers in Local 21 and MEF, and yes to backfilling vacancies so we can have the services our communities need. This will not only affect our future, it will also affect how history remembers us. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Esther? Go ahead, Esther. Esther? We'll come back to Esther. Sarita?
Hi, my name is Sarah Castellanos and I am a public works employee in the city facilities architectural services division. And I'm here to let council know that a 2% wage increase does not pay the rent. And I'm here to let council know that a 2% wage increase does not pay the rent. And I'm asking for them to invest in city services and provide an equitable wage. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Sophia?
Hello, and thank you to the city council for hearing my public comments. My name is Sophia and I'm a member of Sacred Heart's Racial Equity and Community Safety Committee, or REX for short. I'm also a graduate of Cristo Rey San Jose Jesuit High School and a resident of District Three. I'm here because we need a budget that prioritizes our city services and workers who assist our community members. Looking back on my childhood growing up in San Jose, it wasn't police officers that helped me feel safe. It was my teachers, librarians, neighbors, park staff, maintenance staff, and all the essential workers behind the scenes that helped the city run. They made me feel secure walking on my way to school, eating at Yogurtland downtown with my friends and hanging out at the park. In fact, it would be impossible to do anything in San Jose if not for our city workers. I know that my life would be much worse if not for the city workers who serve the community. They deserve fair wages. They deserve to afford to live in the city that they help run. We commend those on the council like Jimenez, Arenas, and Perales, who have been pushing for the reimagining of community safety process to be fair and equitable. And we are looking forward to being a part of this process. But you have the opportunity to do something now that will affect residents in the long run. Our budget can prioritize what our community has been asking for. San Jose can be a place where all residents can thrive and have a future. It can be a place where neighbors know and trust one another, where all the workers of San Jose earn enough to support themselves and their family, and where all members of our community feel safe and secure. So we're calling on you to do two things. One, be the leaders in the fight for race equity and community safety by approving the establishment of a blue ribbon commission. Two, vote yes to fair and equitable wages for our city workers in local 21 and MEF. And yes, to backfilling vacancies so we can have the services our community needs. Thank you for, thank you for your time. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. CJ?
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Council Members. My name is CJ Ryan, and I'm a program manager in the Parks, Recreation and Neighborhood Services Department. And I have been working for the city for eight and a half years. I have been serving as interim administrative officer for over a year and have been working in the EOC since last March in the Food and Necessities Distribution Branch. In both roles, I work with amazing colleagues to do the behind the scenes work to get services out to the community. My colleagues and I have been providing essential services to our residents before the pandemic, during the pandemic and other emergencies this last year, and we will continue to after the pandemic has passed. We are in the business of changing lives through recreation programs, gang intervention services, food distribution and so much more. And it is the most rewarding work I can imagine doing. But rewarding work doesn't feel like it is valued by the city when our wages are so much drastically lower than our peers in other jurisdictions or in other bargaining units. The budget you put forward is a statement of values. And if you truly value the people who work and live in this city, you will pass a budget that invests in our services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Hey, good evening, Vice Mayor Jones, City Manager Sykes and the rest of the council members. My name is Dan Gibson. I am the Vice President of MEF and I have been working for the city of San Jose for close to two decades while living in districts three and six. I also have family living in districts two and 10, so we're pretty well entrenched here. Part of the services that my team have helped provide during the pandemic have centered around the digital inclusion project. That we helped create exterior wireless networks at nine of the San Jose Public Libraries and have provided thousands of Wi-Fi hotspots to underserved communities. We have faced challenges of racial equity and police brutality in this current social climate. And yet the police union was granted a two-year, 3.85% contract. While I appreciate things that the mayor and others have said commending the value of my brothers and sisters in MEF and IFPT. It's kind of trite lift service compared to what they were actually awarded contractually speaking. It's time to put words into action. So I would ask you to think hard on the offers authorized to your bargaining representative. The current proposal is actually a little bit laughable and a bit of a slap to the face. All the folks I know that work for the city of San Jose love what they do. They love the people we serve. But we have been hemorrhaging staff to other jurisdictions. Part of what we need to do is give a sustainable standard of living by a good wage. We were once considered a desired employer, but now we're being used as a stepping stone for more lucrative career paths. We can't, can you continue to let this happen? And it's necessary to provide an adequate compensation to attract premier talent to serve our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek?
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Excellent. Thank you, Chappy. Hello, and thank you to the city council and the mayor for hearing my public comment. I'm an organizer with Sacred Heart, organizing the Committee for Racial Equity and Community Safety, or REX for short, and I am a resident of District Five. We have seen the value and urgency of our public services in times of normalcy, but it's been exacerbated by these times of need. And our city front, our frontline city workers have put their lives on the line during the pandemic to provide essential services to our most valuable residents, to alleviate hunger, provide educational support for families, respond to medical emergencies and so much more. It's high time that they get a fair wage so that they can feed their families and thrive in the city that they provide critical services for. Mayor Licardo, you've in the past tweeted a quote from Lincoln that essentially says that it is not our words that will be remembered, but our actions. And so we're calling on you and the city council to act at this moment in good faith by voting yes for fair and equitable wages for our city workers in local 21 and MEF. And yes, to backfilling vacancies so we can have the services our community needs. And if you take that history and your leadership seriously, you'll get this done. As the civil rights leader Ella Baker puts it, lift as you climb. This will not only affect our future, it will also affect how history remembers us. Thank you and I yield my time.
Thank you. The number that ends in zero seven seven four.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. My name is Tracy Sadlock and I'm on the advisory board for 10,000 Degrees. 10,000 Degrees mission is to create educational equity and support students from low-income backgrounds to get to and through college to achieve full, their full potential and positively impact their communities in the world. A hundred percent of our students are from low-income backgrounds. Eighty-six percent are first in their family to attend college and eighty-five percent from communities of color, with the vast majority from Latinx communities. In just a year at Yerba Buena High School, 10,000 Degrees has reached over 900 students and families with information about college awareness and financial aid and hosted over 60 financial aid college readiness workshops. Additionally, we provide one-on-one peer mentorship support to high school seniors. During COVID, 10,000 Degrees operated all of their programs in the virtual platform. And during the summer and first semester of their senior year, they built college regoing, college-going cultures and campuses among school staff and students by implementing college knowledge and financial aid workshops during the school year, likely combined with AID, DIB and government econ classes and all school assemblies. So with the city's support, 10,000 Degrees can continue to provide program services to the students in the Eastside Union High School District. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Rhonda? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor and honorable council members. Good evening. My name is Rhonda Berry. I have served the city of San Jose for almost 30 years as a nonprofit worker at our city forest, providing core city services. And I'm here tonight to support the real coalition's Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery. We are asking you to consider the work of nonprofits and nonprofit workers when you consider how to spend the recovery funds. This is the number four priority on the Real Coalition's letter calling for one-time funds to support nonprofits, particularly those working on racial equity and issues including environmental justice. Nonprofits and the low-income communities they serve were hit hard by COVID. And we need infrastructure funding to support staffing who can return to delivering needed service to these underserved neighborhoods. Tree planting services in the way of free trees and technical support were also hit hard by COVID. Put on hold at the very time that trees are so badly needed to clean the air, reduce health risks and address the drought. We've been able to use state grants for decades to pay for these services, but no such state grant is available last year or this year. And so we support these one-time recovery funds to provide services to specially to Central and East San Jose. And we feel with the amount of funding coming in, there's no excuse for continued lack of these services now in these areas. This one-time funding can address this gap by providing free trees and services throughout our high-needs neighborhoods and schools. And in the same vein, I'd also like to express my support for Councilmember Carrasco's request for trees for East San Jose. Together, we can improve the quality of life in San Jose for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Jones and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Tanya Pypili, Project Director of Greet, California of the Bay Area, Golden Gate and Central Coast. We've been serving the Santa Clara Valley since 1911, over a century now, and with a mission to fight lung disease and to work with our communities to promote lung health. So our agency is known as a local clean air and healthy lungs leader, and I'm here to support a critical but often overlooked contributor to clean air, trees. As a resident of District Five, I am particularly enthusiastic about getting more trees in our district as our district has less trees than others. Trees are known as the lungs of the planet because they give off oxygen to be used by other living things. They remove carbon dioxide and particulates, save lives, especially of heart and lung disease patients. And they are the cheapest fix for climate change due to their ability to sequester carbon. A quick online visit to EarthShare reveals other important contributions from trees that District Five needs, which is reduce crime. We need increased property values, greater mental health overall, temperature control, flood control, wildlife habitat. Now, the city has had robust tree planting programs in the past and should return to those. We have a nonprofit, Our City Forest, OCF, that can help stretch any investment that the city would make, providing turnkey planting services, engaging local residents and train the community to care. Every dollar invested through them would reap many dollars worth of economic and health health benefits for the lung health of its residents. In addition to natural beauty and positive effect on mental health, we urge you to invest in trees as proposed by Councilmember Carrasco. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Stephen Pagan, Past President of AEA, Association of Engineers and Architects. Until my retirement a few years ago, after 21 years with the Department of Public Works, I am a resident of San Jose's District 10. In 2010, 2011, the city instituted 10% pay cuts to all employees across the board. And since that time, the city has taken incremental steps to only partially restore those pay cuts, not to mention cost of living adjustments in the most expensive region of the United States. During my time as president, I was disheartened at losing so many well-trained and dedicated engineers, architects and project managers to nearby agencies and municipalities who offered more competitive compensation. For professional talent, San Jose is competing against the county and all cities and agencies in the Greater South Bay and beyond. As a taxpayer, I expect the city to deliver services and projects in a timely and efficient manner. The best investment that the city can make is to offer competitive compensation to retain dedicated and well-trained staff to ensure continued delivery of projects and services and to continue to provide that frontline presence. San Jose used to be the employer of choice not too long ago, and it needs to get back to that point once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Liu, CEO of the Health Trust, speaking in support of the Real Coalition's Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery, which has already been referenced. I'd like to highlight the six of the six priorities in the Agenda for Recovery, calling for investment in improving health outcomes in our community. Health is not just a county priority. The city impacts health through parks, recreation and neighborhood services, through the libraries, through San Jose PD and other departments. We need support in developing a community-wide set of metrics to gauge our collective progress in building health equity. We need promotoros and other trusted messengers on the ground, helping residents in our hardest-hit communities get connected to services that support their health. And we need to reduce food insecurity and social isolation through further investments in health and food distribution and programs like Friends from Meals on Wheels. We in the nonprofit sector, we are your partners. We're here to help and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Casey?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Casey Hill and I represent Vegilution and the Cisipoid Collective. I'm a resident of District Six. I'd like to highlight the first of the six priorities proposed by the Real Coalition, where the Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery calls for investment in continued robust relief to ensure that those harmed by the pandemic aren't further harmed. Specifically, we call for additional cash assistance, childcare supports, food and workforce programs, as well as coordination and prioritization within and among local governments to deliver those supports. In the case of the food sector, communities of color and low-income communities have disproportionately borne the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, compounding existing inequities. This is absolutely true of so many of the East San Jose families served by Vegilution, over 75% of whom are essential workers living in overcrowded households. We should approach our food and agricultural system work and all work through a racial equity framework for delivery of services and developing partnerships. Vegilution supports investment in locally sourced food distribution and grassroots community food hubs, which can also serve as emergent food system infrastructure, as well as in food sector workforce programs. One example is the formation of worker cooperatives as a powerful tool for food equity because they often serve low-income, non-white workers, like many of those employed in the food sector. I ask that you show your commitment to investment in communities that have suffered decades of disinvestment. Please support the six priorities outlined by members of the Real Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Logan?
Hi, can you guys hear me, council?
Loud and clear.
Hi, my name is Logan Carter and I'm an analyst for the airport department. Been with the city about two years and I've lived in Council District Two for just about my whole life. I just want to show my support and emphasize the need to pass a budget that prioritizes city services, employee wages and benefits. Hundreds of city employees acted as essential frontline workers and kept critical infrastructure and services performing at a high level. And they deserve recognition. Investing in employees is important for recruiting and retaining a competitive workforce. And that's extremely important in one of the most competitive job markets in the world in Silicon Valley. We're competing with companies like Apple, Facebook, Google, Cisco, all which are major employers in the area. There's a staffing crisis at the city with 700 empty positions currently. And I think there are a number of proposals that the union coalitions are proposing that would bring us in line with companies in the area, including, importantly, wage increases, but also paid rental leave as well as increased vacation. I think this would be a crucial step to increasing the quality of life of the employees and aid in getting more quality employees that will perform city services and show recognition to the hard work current employees in all departments are doing. The budget is a reflection of the values of city council hat has for our residents and city workers. The American Rescue Plan is sending over $200 million to the city and I are a doll of city council to pass a budget that invests in public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And before I call the next speaker, I just want to give everybody a notice that after the speaker, we're gonna go to a one-minute speaking time in the interest of the large number of in the interest of the large number of folks who want to talk or speak. The person with the number ending 8065?
Hi, I'm Jill Mariani and I have worked for the city of San Jose for the past four years. In this past year, I spent time leading the Food and the Food Program. To date, the work of my team has resulted in the distribution of over 150 million meals throughout Santa Clara County to homeless, medically vulnerable, senior and low-income residents. I heard many of our Food Network partners call in tonight. The city staff on my team are the ones that enable the city to be able to support their efforts. For the past year, myself and many of our colleagues worked out of class, covered multiple positions or both. We didn't hesitate, we didn't complain, we simply got to work to give our residents in the city the best possible response we could. In all year, we believe that when our leadership said that they appreciated us, that they meant it. And that someday, when they had the opportunity to put action behind those words, that they would. And here we are bargaining our wage increase, and it turns out that we're looking at 25% less than our previous contract. So instead of a 3% increase that we had before, we're looking at it getting cut to 2.5%. Now, none of us work at the city to get rich, and we don't expect the city to compete with Google and Facebook, but we do expect it to at least keep up with the rate of inflation so that we can maintain our purchasing power. A 2.5% increase in a 4% inflationary environment, and that's a decrease in our actual purchasing power. And if we want to provide the types of services our residents deserve and to continue to lead, we need to keep the talented people we have working here, not push them away. The number one way we can retain talent is to adopt a wage increase that is appropriate for where we live and work. And after all we have done and been through this past year, is 25% less than before, the best we can do is this our new normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jesse. Go ahead, Jesse.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time and thank you for everything that you do. I've been a city employee for over 24 years, serving the community here. I'm a Building Trade Supervisor. I've been wearing many hats during a pandemic. We jumped into the ELC, providing all the PPE for the entire city, which was just a chore in itself. So we've been very involved, all our brothers and sisters in the workforce, of providing to the city. I love what I do. I have a passion to continue doing what I do. I just want to be heard. I want you guys all to hear that I just want to make sure it's a good opportunity, guys, for action. And the action is to consider and make a good action statement in the negotiations that's going through right now and giving us a good compensation to show the value that we really do provide to residents, to community. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. SBCN?
Hi, this is Kierika Zanzis from SBCN, and I co-facilitate the Race Equity Action Leadership Coalition. The Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery that you've heard something about tonight was submitted for the City Council's consideration today by 87 nonprofit organizations and their allies. It calls on the city to spend the remaining 50 million of its American Rescue Plan funding on communities of color, immigrants, women and children of youth. We want to acknowledge and appreciate that many of the priorities that are reflected in MBA Number 16, other MBAs, aspects of the mayor's budget and a number of budget documents are very consistent with what we are requesting, and we want to support those proposals within the budget framework. One important aspect of the Equity Investment Agenda is a public process for deciding how to spend that funding, and we appreciate that the city has established a recovery task force, and we hope that in this important moment in our community's recovery, the task force can be used to center community in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Berna Sendejas, a resident and activist from District Five. I'm the Vice Chair of Movimiento Coalition. I want to thank Councilwoman Carrasco for including our small businesses, children, youth, community and parks. We have seen this horrible inequities with COVID-19 that has had on Latino communities, District Five being one of the highest affected. Our small businesses are our second families to many of us who have created relationships with our local businesses. This will greatly help our small businesses who have been affected and many did not survive, and the rest are holding on by a small thread. And this is the much-deserved help that they need, this rescue plan. We need to prioritize our small businesses and our children, our youth, and create pathways so they can be successful citizens. I want to thank everyone who's worked on this. It's crucial that our city allocates adequate resources to serve our small businesses and Latino children and families who have been highly traumatized by the high mortality and infection rates.
Thank you, Brenda. Florin? Go ahead, Florin.
Can you guys hear me? Sorry.
Oh, loud and clear.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Floran Lapustio. I've lived in San Jose for over 30 years, and I've served the city of San Jose for almost six years. I'm currently a senior engineer with the Department of Transportation and the President of the Association of Engineers and Architects. I'm also a first-generation immigrant from Romania, who began life under an oppressive communist regime where a few powerful people made decisions that could negatively affect everyone's day-to-day life. As someone who has been blessed to live and bask in the freedom and democracy of this great country, I ask you truly listen to the voice of the city's employees because they are shouting, demanding to be heard. We are the nation's tenth-largest city, home to over diverse community of over a million residents. We have over 700 city jobs that are not staffed, and we are tired of this being acknowledged by solution, but not being addressed. This is not sustainable. We desire, we want, this is not sustainable if we desire to fight quality services services. We need to recruit and retain a competitive workforce.
Thank you, Florin. Thank you. Kyle?
Yeah, hey, can you all hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, so my name is Kyle Bacat, and I've served the city of San Jose for three years as a senior librarian and branch manager for the District Five Libraries. That's Almiron, Killview and Mount Pleasant on the east side. I'm a resident of District Three as well. As you no doubt know, the library has been instrumental in implementing the city's education and digital literacy strategy. I'm joining my colleagues today to ask that you put forth a budget that prioritizes all of our city's services. We need a budget that is equitable for all of our diverse essential workers. We can't give wage increases to police officers and leave behind our librarians, cleaning crews, airport workers and more. Before I came here tonight, I looked at SJPD's crime data for 2020. I looked at the 35,000-plus reports that were filed and found that the clearance rate for SJPD was roughly 17% in 2020, which includes violent and property crimes. Their budget is over $400 million.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you. Jesse? Go ahead, Jesse. I guess we lost Eric.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
I'm Eric Johnson. I'm a city engineer of five years. I just wanted to talk about the major staffing issue that we have. It's especially true with the wastewater facility where I work. Just over a week ago, we lost two more engineers, both of them leaving to other cities that have better pay and better wages. I really think that increasing wages here would help us retain our engineers that we have currently and stop losing more. The American Rescue Plan has given the city 233 million in federal relief aid. I urge all of our City Council to pass a budget that invests in our city services and make sure our city employees can afford to live in the city that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Camille? Go ahead, Camille.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Camille Yanis-Wantani, and I'm the Executive Director of Some Most Mayfair and a member of the Cisipolite Collective, East San Jose Peace Partnership and the Real Coalition. Given the gravity of the situation and the impact of COVID-19 has had in our communities, we request that you allocate funding to address the destructive impact the pandemic has had in the three zip codes in our county, 95116, 95122 and 95127. This pandemic has exposed the long-term effects of systemic racial and social inequities in the east side of San Jose, something we have endured for decades. 40% of these families live below 185% of the federal poverty level, and almost 75% of the working population are essential workers living in overcrowded households, and the pandemic has exacerbated these challenges. So in alignment with many of my colleagues here this evening, I ask that you uplift a budget with racial equity and justice at the foundation, that we center ourselves on children and families first, that we care for our essential workers, including our city employees who provide critical services for children and families.
Thank you, Camille. Thank you. Keith?
Hello, my name is Keith Paxton. I am a program manager in the PBCE Permit Center. I've lived in San Jose for almost 30 years and worked downtown for all that time. I started with the city in 2019, and one of the first things that I noticed was that the Permit Center is severely understaffed. I've noticed that in other locations as well. I was a hiree and attempt to try to fill some of that. Additional team members have been hired, but we have a problem with retention. We have not enough people to do the work that's being demanded of the team, and we don't pay them a decent wage because folks will move on to other positions. I don't mind having people having a career path and advancement, but we need experienced folks to stay here and service the people in the city. And we're just not able to do that with the staff we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Hi, my name is Richard Bandy, and I'm a Senior Airport Operations Specialist at the San Jose International Airport. During the pandemic, and now myself and my fellow coworkers, and put our lives on the line to ensure safe travel, my coworkers and myself asked that you consider our contributions to this San Jose citizens and pass a budget that prioritizes frontline workers and staff. I love my job and my community and would like to raise a family in our great San Jose area, but this will not be possible without a competitive livable wage and a fair parental leave program. I'd also like to comment on the city's efforts to combat racial injustice. The city created a new department that combats this, but I'm not sure what they actually do. I think if the city followed Santa Clara County's lead in making Juneteenth a holiday, it would show that the city truly cares about racial injustice and give the community a day to celebrate diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie?
Hi, my name is Melanie Helmy, and I work for SJPD in the OSSD department. Our department works 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including holidays. We have worked the entire pandemic and during the protests and have done so face-to-face with the public, and we have put ourselves and our families at risk. Our jobs include serving the community, processing criminals and backing up our dispatchers and officers. We help our units collect information from small crimes to homicides. We may not be what you consider the frontline workers, but we are affected just as much as they are. We work five different units in our department, and we have done so while being severely shorthanded and we do so willingly. This is only a small part of what we do, and I truly believe that if you knew the depths of the work that we do, you would understand that we deserve to be paid a fair and equal wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Aziza?
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Good evening. My name is Aziza. I've served the city for seven years, born and raised in San Jose, and I've lived majority of my life in District Seven, and my family and I have personally voted for Councilmember Espars, and I'm hoping she's here to fight alongside us. I've been following my union's negotiation. I'm disappointed to learn what the city has proposed. Our city is growing rapidly, but our city services aren't keeping up. We need to recruit and retain a competitive workforce, and that starts with respecting and fully funding our staff. When I started seven years ago, there was at least a dozen of us that started at the same time. Some of us were future leaders and future directors. Out of the dozen of us, there's only two left because many have left for other jurisdictions for one reason and one reason only, higher wages. This doesn't include that many people I've seen come and go in my short seven years. We can't compete with other neighboring jurisdictions, and many people are using the city of San Jose as a training ground and taking their expertise to better other cities. This is unacceptable. I urge the City Council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our city workers. If anything, we deserve just as much as our brothers and sisters in PD. Otherwise, you'll continue to lose the next generation of city leaders to other cities and municipalities.
Thank you, Aziza. Rosanna?
Hello, my name's Rosanna Carrasco, and I was born and raised in San Jose. I live in District Two. I've served the city of San Jose for over 20 years. I currently work in the PBCE as a code enforcement inspector. During the pandemic, our department continued to work in making sure the city and its residents continue to live in a safe and clean environment. During the pandemic, I was also reassigned to the ELC to assist the county. My coworkers and I were sent to areas considered hotspots throughout the city of San Jose. These hotspots were areas where COVID infections were high. We made sure that we provided businesses educational information and resources to help them during the pandemic. Please, I am here to highlight the need to pass a budget that values its residents as well as city employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca? Go ahead.
Hello. Hello, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Rebecca Ross. I'm a planner for, I've been with the city of San Jose for over 15 years, and I would like to stand with the community and my fellow coworkers and ask for an equitable wage so that we can afford to live and serve the citizens of San Jose, continue to do our jobs and keep employees, employee retention is really important to me, especially as a supervisor. I've seen a lot of turnover, and as everyone has heard again and again and again, we lose those good people to other jurisdictions that pay higher wages. We just want what's equitable. We're not asking for more than what others are getting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yeah, hello, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Hope you're hearing me fine.
Loud and clear.
So my name is Anthony Thornberry, and I'm also a program manager in the PBC Department and the Building Division, actually, working as part of the Permit Center operations. And I agree with everyone's comments. The one thing I want to add is, it would seem this past year, you know, to speak to wages and things, there's a lot of things wrong with the wages disparity in the salaries and things to neighboring communities. We're losing people left and right from my team in the Permit Center that processes all the building permits like every few months. And so this year, one year, I think it'd be most fair if all employees in the city of San Jose got whatever the highest offer was to whichever union was getting that offer. And this year, if it's police, we should all get whatever it is. We all put in the same effort, one year, equally in these extreme conditions. So where's that equity for everybody in that way? And it would at least help the people that are leaving. It wouldn't be as easy to leave on us if the wage started to improve more fairly toward the cost of living.
Kristi? Go ahead, Kristi. Okay, we lost Kristi Smider? Go ahead. Smider, you have permission to speak? Okay, we'll come back to you. Go ahead, Aaron.
Hi, good evening. My name is Aaron LuShu. I served the city of San Jose as an employee for six years as your senior architect at Mineta San Jose International Airport. I'm a San Jose resident in District Six. As a senior architect, I'm responsible for managing our terminal development program. Our team manages the physical improvements to our airport facility and protects the city's investment. We ensure design and construction deliverables are met or exceeded. Sadly, our counterpart airports, SFO and Oakland, have salaries of equivalent positions that range from 31% to 46% more than the city of San Jose. While I understand that we will not be able to make that drastic While I understand that we will not be able to make that drastic of an increase in a year or two, I think a fair and reasonable contract in the right direction is what I'm requesting. San Jose Police Department has, is received almost a four percent age wage increase annually over the next two years. And we need to invest just as much in filling vacancies and providing competitive salaries for all city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Adress?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. I'm a lifelong resident of San Jose, over forty years, currently residing in District Two. My wife has worked with the city for over twenty years. And what I'd like to see is just a fair and equitable agreement with investment in our employees and such. During the COVID outbreak, my wife was assigned to the EOC where she had to go in COVID hotspots, the hottest spots of the city and just make sure businesses were compliant with PPE and the signage and stuff. But it did cause quite a bit of anxiety within the family because, you know, she's afraid of getting us infected and such like that. So we just like to see her commitment to the city and stuff rewarded with a fair and equitable, equitable pay and investment in the employees. That's all.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. My name is David Nerhood. I've worked for the city for twenty-one years. And I want to thank you today for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of all city workers to ensure that city workers achieve fair contracts as part of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So I put together a little poem and I hope you like it. Rumor on the streets says we're close but not there. Let's work together to do what is fair. The issue at hand is quite simply retention. Yet we're not quite sure that we have your attention. Status quo be damned, let's join as one force and send San Jose on its exciting new course. Two to three percent a noble gesture for sure. But will we have found the retention cure? While cities around us must think that surely we just, salivating over two more years of taking our best. Then Google comes in, world-class without fail. Their plans delayed because the planners off to Sunnyvale. The campus build-out ekes along with constant delay. Staff off to Santa Clara for far better pay. The workers have flat out all around, can't we see? It's a premise so simple called pay equity. I'm almost done. Yet here's an opportunity so pivotal, so grand, to put San Jose back in command. The budget has money nonetheless. What a pity if we don't work together to do what's best for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Marie?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to say that, consider the city of San Jose employees as investments. Each one you lose is a bad investment. The citizens of this city are paying for services through taxes. Where are their services? Employees are stretched to the limit. At what point will the city mayor, HR, OER, council members decide that competitive wages will stop the exodus of employees? With that exodus, a loss of time, money, training that employee took with them. Like to say that as a San Jose employee for the last twenty years, as a dispatcher, we didn't get to take advantage of any of the stipends or any of the other benefits that the city offered at the time, which were pretty limited. In February, council approved hazard pay for grocery store workers for three dollars. But yet they're not going to do the same for city employees. I find that an injustice and an embarrassment. But thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. David?
Hello, hello. Hi. Hello, everybody. My name is David Wen. I've been working with the city of San Jose for about eight years now as an associate engineer in the city facility architectural services. I started at the bottom as an engineer technician and through the years, I've proven myself where I'm at today as an associate engineer. I currently live in San Jose District Four, where I moved from Sacramento. As a technician, I did data field collection plan review, coordinating with other neighboring departments, drafting plans and such, and carrying capital projects through construction in the sanitary sewer section. I now work in CFAS as an associate engineer, working on some of the toughest projects such as the SOLO for America ICE facility expansion with the San Jose Sharks. And I also worked on park projects as well as creek projects. So I guess you can call me a jack of all trades. I manage these projects basically, oh shoot, I'm about to run out of time, actually.
Thank you, David.
This fine.
So Jatha?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My name is Sujata Venkatesharaman. And I am from Best Valley Community Services, also at SVCN Agency. I'm here to support the Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery. With respect to setting racial justice and equity as key goals in the American Rescue Expenditure Plan and in recovery more generally, the city should make tangible racial justice and equity objectives explicit and create specific targets to measure those. As a safety net organization, we see the effects of systemic racism on an everyday basis with our low-income and B-PAC communities. We are calling in City of San Jose to invest in liberation and dismantling systemic racism, Black and B-PAC-led initiative and solidarity effect within and among B-PAC communities. Thank you.
Thank you. JC?
Hi, I'm JC Hatfield with Planning, Building and Code Enforcement. I'm a code enforcement supervisor and a member of camp. I have also supervised probably about twenty members of MEF over the last few years. And they all deserve to be treated equal. We deserve to be treated with the same respect that the police department is as far as our pay increases. And we're out there on the frontline too. And everywhere from the Permit Center to the dispatchers, the services when they're not met, they, they come to you guys. When someone has to wait for their permit, it's known. And these are the same services that we can improve with additional pay and retention. So I hope you guys are able to consider that when you're approving the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Marco?
Hi, I'm Marco. And I just wanted to say this quick story because I was in another budget meeting earlier and even Sam, it was actually a comment addressed to Sam. And the lady said that she could, she was, it was hard for her to talk because it was just calling on people at random because you never know the lineup. So she gets called on and she has like little time to answer. So she's in the middle of things. So I think that's an example of how just undone this is because we, it's not even here. Like you're not even calling on three people. Like you said you would and then you're not. So if that's an example of how city governments run, then I don't know what these workers are doing, asking you guys for things. They should just be demanding it. Workers, if you're still listening, you must stay united. Don't rely on these guys. Demand everything that you want.
Thank you. Roberto?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Roberto Franco and I've been a city of San Jose employee for the past seven years. I started as a community service officer and I now work for enforcement. I am proud of the work that I do. I believe that city employees all share a genuine desire to provide the services their residents need and that they deserve. And we do it gladly. And especially during the past year, we have done it valiantly as we all grappled with the effects of the pandemic. We were deemed essential workers and we embraced that. And we went out and did the work that was necessary. I now ask the leadership of the city, the mayor and city council, adopt a budget that acknowledges our contributions. Please do not take us for granted. Invest in us so that we can in turn continue to serve the residents of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council members and city manager. My name is Jason Day, born and raised in San Jose District Ten. And I've served with the city now for about four years as an engineer. Our city is growing rapidly, but our city services aren't keeping up. We have a major understaffing crisis. Over seven hundred city jobs are not staffed, representing services that are not being provided. We need to recruit and retain a competitive workforce and that starts with respecting and fully funding our staff. The budget is a reflection of the value of city council has for our residents and city workers. President Biden's American Rescue Plan is sending hundreds of millions in federal relief to the city of San Jose. I urge all of our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Tho? Go ahead.
Hi, you hear me well?
Loud and clear.
Okay. I'm concerned about community and economic development. Have you known that the city of San Jose rapid growing, but city of San Jose doesn't have enough staff? And beside that, I know that the city wave for their current employee is not good enough to compare with other city. And I believe that's the San Jose need to give the way compatible with another city. And hire the person who got experience and talent to work with city of San Jose. I got really bad experience. I talked with the program manager in the BPCE, but he know nothing. I don't know why, how he can go in that position. And then I hope mayor can hear my voice well as well. There's many business and houses are constructed in San Jose without permit because I am a person that investment is.
Thank you. Wrong?
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, yeah, my name is Ron Liu and I work for the city's environmental services department, wastewater treatment plant. I worked for the city for fifteen years. I know the workers at the wastewater treatment plant works twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, thirty-three hundred sixty-five days a year. So they are definitely essential workers for the city of San Jose. So I'm, I'm asking council members and mayors to consider in the budget process to give them raise the same as fire and the police department. So that they can perform the essential services for the city, for the people of San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Hello, my name is Stephanie Lau and I've served the city of San Jose for twenty-one years. I am a senior analyst, safety manager for the airport department. As a safety manager, I ensure the safety and health needs of two hundred and fourteen full-time employees. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, the airport did not shut down, but remained open and continues to be operational to serve our public and passengers. My job was to ensure that our airport frontline staff's safety and health was protected so that they could continue working safely to serve our public. We need a budget that is equitable for our diverse essential workers. We can't give wage increases to police officers and leave behind our airport workers and more. This is essential and valuable work that our whole community is relying on. The budget is a reflection of the value the city council has for our residents and city workers. President Biden's American Rescue Plan is sending two hundred and twenty-three million dollars in federal relief to the city of San Jose. I urge all of our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam? Go ahead, Sam. Take yourself off mute. Go ahead. Okay, TK?
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Thank you to those listening. As an employee and San Jose native, I would encourage you to realize the value of your employees and reinvest in your workforce. As you all know, the cost to live here in San Jose is extreme and honestly above most of our pay grades. Yet San Jose's workforce shows up to provide critical services needed for a city of this size to operate safely on a day-to-day. Many employees have to travel hours crossing multiple counties just to survive. Code enforcement is critically understaffed and overtaxed. Please stop the San Jose Training Academy. Make the investment for employees to stay in San Jose.
Thank you. ADL? Go ahead, ADL? Take your, take yourself off mute. Go ahead. Okay, lost ADL. Anthony?
Good evening. Hi, City Council, Honorable Mayor. My name is Anthony Doe. I've been a lifelong resident with the city of San Jose. I grew up in City Five and now I currently reside in City Eight. I went to San Jose State and now I'm an associate engineer with DOT for the past eight years. I would like to continue to work in Lincoln, San Jose, but the proposed two percent makes it very difficult. My colleagues and I used to believe that we'd be lifers and work for San Jose forever, following the great traditions of leaders in San Jose. But it's, it's been very difficult to really consider that. Just in the, you know, over the course of my career here, I've been, I've seen more than half my colleagues leave for other opportunities with higher pay. And these colleagues, it's been very difficult to do any of the work we've reached where passed with. Back when I first started, I recall the current city manager speaking to the three Ps, planning, projects and people. I take that to heart for a growing city and I don't see an end to the work. We have great plans.
Thank you. Scarlett? Go ahead, Scarlett.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Scarlett Dermusay and I've been a public safety radio dispatcher for just under five years with the city of San Jose Fire Department. I'm a resident of San Jose Council District Ten. I'm here to urge the council to fund our frontline workers and provide the city with not only better living wages, but to have competitive pay with other cities in the Bay Area. For tonight's meeting, I also wrote a poem to describe my coworkers and my struggles as city workers, as nine-one-one dispatchers and call takers, and ultimately just as human beings working in the city. However, I understand that a lot of my other coworkers in the city want time to talk and my poem runs at four minutes. So I understand if this is not possible.
Thank you, Scarlett. Stephanie?
Yes, hi, thank you so much. I am a volunteer with Mothers Out Front and I'm also a landscape architect. And I wanted to speak in support of council member Carrasco's budget item to plant thousands of trees in East San Jose District Five. Trees are a climate equity and health issue and they will improve the livability of East San Jose. If you've walked East San Jose at all in the summer, you know it is much hotter than there are than in other areas of the city that have street trees arching over the street. And this heat island effect contributes to an unhealthy situation. You have hotter sidewalks and streets and higher energy bills and less opportunity for neighborhood recreation. And what neighborhood trees can do is become an essential element in reducing the temperature. This would reduce cooling bills and it would also reduce energy use. So trees also sequester carbon in their trunks, branches and leaves, and tree roots filter contaminants for the soil. So trees also provide habitat as well. And as we know, everything is connected. So we'd like to see this budget item implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Leila?
Hi, my name is Lila Kuria. I have worked at the city of San Jose for seven years. I also reside in San Jose in District Ten. I'm an engineer and work in the Department of Public Works. And during the pandemic, I too played a part in keeping the public safe. At the start of the pandemic, I worked on an emergency repair to prevent a trail from being eroded. The trail was well-used and provided the public with a chance to get out of the house and exercise. As a resident of San Jose, I see my utility bills increasing and I don't see my wages increasing at the same rate. I'm asking for the budget that is equitable for all of our diverse essential workers. We can't, we can't give a wage increase to the police and leave behind the other essential workers. I give my time to another next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadia?
Hello, my name is Nadia Nounstoyan and I'm with the local twenty-one A. Hello, my name is Nadia Long Stoyan and I'm with the local twenty-one A A. I've been working as associate engineer for Development Services Bureau of Fire Prevention for twenty-two years now. The work that we do, plan checks and inspections for all the projects in San Jose is absolutely essential, ensuring life safety and proper protection. The increase in wages that we are asking for barely covers inflation. The reported average overall price increase compared to May twenty twenty, it's five percent. So that would be just cost of living. The increase will not bring us at far with neighborhood jurisdiction wages. That perpetuates the problem we have been having for retention and recruitment of highly skilled professionals. We ask the city to invest in itself by investing in us. Thank you.
Thank you, May.
Good evening, I'm May Lu. I'm a resident of San Jose and reside in District Eight. I was born and raised in San Jose my entire life. I also currently work at Mineta San Jose International Airport as an engineer and I'll be approaching two years of service with the city. Throughout the entire pandemic, my coworkers and I show up at the airport to make sure it's operational and follows the highest safety standards possible so that all healthcare professionals and other essential workers can still travel to where they are needed in a safe manner. As you may know, a lot more health and safety protocols have been put in place due to COVID, increasing all our workload. We are understaffed to begin with. We have a major underfunding crisis with over seven hundred city jobs not being staffed, representing a lot of services that are not being provided. President Biden's American Rescue Plan is sending over two hundred million in federal relief just to the city of San Jose. So I urge all our city council to please pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Hi, my name is Kat Estrada. I'm an employee responsible for all of the recruitment, training and performance management functions in my city department. I also manage our employment data. I see numbers like a quarter of our department having less than two years' experience with the city. At two years, employees have experience which is valued higher by other nearby agencies. We also lose employees when they vest at five years of service and again with benefits changes at fifteen years. Further, almost every city of San Jose classification makes ten to fifteen percent plus than its regional competitors. What this means in the aggregate is that in addition to less experience and high turnover and entry level and direct service classifications, we have whole layers of leaderships missing throughout this organization. It means we're serving as the farm system for every other local government agency. Departments are continuing to manage fifteen percent vacancy rates due to high turnover and burnout. The only way we are going to be able to assure future quality of services for residents of San Jose is to invest in city employees. We aren't seeking to solve everything in this year's budget, but we are asking this council to begin addressing that what has spent more than a decade long organizational ill. Thank you.
Thank you. One, five, seven, six, four, six.
Hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jay. I've been with the city for over five years at the library as a network technician. I live in District One. During the pandemic, we mobilized a digital inclusion program for public schools and for the public, hotspots, laptops, Chromebooks, iBooks, iPads, the Wi-Fi expansion across branches. These new services were prioritized because we were told about how important libraries and access to information were to the public while maintaining services for our staff's everyday needs as they fluctuated from onsite to remote. It's meaningless to be praised for our work in emails and the news be denied a pay raise that reflects as such. This tells other city employees that we aren't as essential and must settle for less. I urge all of our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Hi, thank you so much for your time and hearing my public comment. I'm a member of Sacred Heart's Facial Equity and Community Safety Committee and a resident of District Three. In the wake of the murder of George Floyd, hundreds of residents in San Jose took to the streets and to see a halt to call for a reimagining of community safety. Since then, Rex and many others have been pushing for a process where the city could begin to make this happen. Yet the way that this year's budget has turned does not reflect the call from the community. We increased the wages of police officers and yet leave behind many city workers who are the backbone of our community, especially in the past year during this pandemic. This is unacceptable and our committee is urging the council to do right by our city workers. We commend those in the council who've been pushing for the reimagining of community safety. And we are calling on the leaders in the fight for race equity and community safety by approving the establishment of a blue ribbon commission and by giving our city workers fair and equitable wages. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Hi, my name is Victoria Tran. I'm twenty-two years old and grew up all my life in San Jose District Eight. This is my first time speaking at a public city meeting and I think it's pretty disrespectful that Mayor Sam Licardo isn't here to listen to everyone who showed up today. Anyways, I urge the council to vote on an equitable budget that supports city service workers. City workers need to have competitive wages to increase worker retention. We need to value experienced city workers so that our city services improve and expand to meet the needs of our community. For example, within the building section of PBCE, it takes six months to review an issuance compared to fifteen years ago when it took one hour for an express program. I urge the city council and the mayor to demonstrate that they care and understand our community by passing a budget that invests in our public services and gives fair wages to city workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hey, my name is Kristin Earhart and I've served the city of San Jose for almost eight years and I've been a resident of District Ten for a long time, born and raised in the city. I currently cannot afford to buy a home in the city in which I have been born and served and served passionately. During the pandemic, my husband was laid off and I continued to go into work along with my coworkers as nine-one-one dispatchers, talking to people who were scared, couldn't breathe or had lost loved ones. We showed up every day, often working more hours than we'd ever worked before in our time serving the city. And we listened to call after call through the fires, through civil unrests, through the pandemic, and now most recently through the active shooter. The budget is a reflection of the value the city council has for our residents and city workers. President Biden's American Rescue Plan is sending two hundred and twenty-three million in federal relief to the city of San Jose. I urge all of our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Stevenson and I'm a senior accountant's employee at the city. I started in PBCE but most recently moved to clean energy. I spent most of the pandemic working in PBCE and I, I've heard many of my colleagues here say the same thing. Many of us are working two to three to four jobs at the same time. Our, our staffing, there aren't enough hours in the day basically to get done what we feel that we need to do for our city. It hurts when we're not able to serve our community in a timely manner, when we're not able to respond to the emails and the phone calls in a way that is productive. The city's become a training step for professionals who move to more lucrative positions at other municipalities. I was hired to replace someone who did that, who replaced someone who did that, who replaced someone who did that. It takes incredible time and investment to hire and train new employees. Please consider this in your decision.
Thank you. H Moore.
Hi, my name is Seth Moore. I worked for the city of San Jose for eighteen years. I'm a police property specialist. We serve the police officers directly. How can we be treated different? They wouldn't be able to do their jobs without us. In my unit, we've been short-staffed on and off for the past six years. At times fully staffed for two months and then finding ourselves short-staffed again. Furthermore, I would like to request that the city look at reclassifying the positions. Like I said, I've been employed for eighteen years and I have the same title as employees who've been with the city for only two years. Thank you for your time and please be fair and do what's right. Thank you for.
Thank you, Hector.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Hector Ortiz and I have served the city of San Jose for over fourteen years total with the last seven years as a code enforcement inspector. I currently work for the multiple housing team for code enforcement in PBCE. I'm speaking in regards to the need to pass a budget that provides our city employees with equitable pay and frankly, two percent is not equitable pay. City workers have continued to provide service and continue to respond to residents' requests and needs without pause. In my current department, during the midst of a pandemic, code enforcement continued to respond and provide services to residents of San Jose, whether it was through our virtual remote inspections or performing duties such as providing help at E O C with homes encampments. City staff helped and stepped up to the task at hand and continue to perform their job without pause. The budget is a reflection of the values the city council has for our residents and city workers. I hope you make the right decision providing city employees with equitable pay, not just for police officers, but for our like variants, cleaning crews, airport workers and more and backfilling positions we desperately need. Thank you for your time and your concern.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. My name is Mary Morse. I've been a senior environmental program measure, served the city. It's been my honor for the last twenty-two years. I'm asking that councils support a budget that recognizes values and invests in all city workers because we all provide essential services to our residents, our businesses and our environment. I manage teams that protect our environment. They are passionate, highly skilled and provide valuable service without fail, literally through floods, fires and pandemics. They stood up and stepped up to serve as disaster service workers, serving in baking hot warehouses, packaging food for families in need, helping residents and businesses apply for emergency grants, delivering through food throughout the community and more. Working in unsafe conditions, but showing up every day to provide service for the city. They did an amazing job while coping with these dangers, this uncertainty and worrying for their families and their livelihoods. I ask that you please value them and support equitable wages for all city workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Hi, my name is Alyssa. I work, I'm a steward for M E F and I work for the police department as a civilian supporting our officers. I worked throughout the last year along with so many of my coworkers and I'm calling to ask that when looking into the budget for the coming years, you seriously look at the budget being allotted for M E F and I F P T E. In our current negotiations, it seems as though our value and best interests are not being addressed. We have been offered an increase that is so much less than the cost of living adjustments. The cities failed to address many proposals that we have brought to the table that mean so much to myself and so many of my coworkers, including the I'm sorry, the paid family leave. I'm asking that we invest in the city so that we can hire and retain the best possible people. I was hired with ten people. Out of the ten of us, there are only two of us still left working with the city of San Jose. Everyone else is left for better paying jobs with other cities. Please work with M E F and I F P T E to provide our employees with more equitable wages and proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Yes, good evening. My name is Karen Martinez and I'm one of the trustees in the Evergreen San Jose City Community College Board area two that consists of Alum Rock, Mount Pleasant and Evergreen. In addition to, I'm a D five resident. I just want to echo what I have heard this evening and because of time, I just want to make sure that you can please work to adopt your budget about the small business development on the east side, childcare, low cost and/or free tutoring for our students in our community, housing assistance that is desperately needed as our garbage, water and electricity are increasing. Also, is the, the essential food that is being provided by the food bank that we are giving this food to our residents without asking them for essential information such as name, address, phone number and zip code. Please give them these essential food services because they are in need. One last thing, if you value your, your essential workers, then please put your money where your mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Andrea.
Hi, my name is Andrea Case and I've served the city for over fourteen years. I'm also a D ten resident. We've seen the value and urgency of our public services in times of normalcy and even more so in times of need. Myself and colleagues have put our lives on the line during the pandemic to provide essential services. I urge an equitable budget that doesn't leave behind those that delivered food, conducted health screenings or allowed residents to pick up library materials. I myself worked in the emergency operations centers, conducted and supervising health screenings. Two point two five percent does not make me feel valued. When compared to others, it hardly helps with the housing and childcare costs that normally take up my pay. And we have also become a one income family in the pandemic. Please show you care for city employees and invest in us as we invest in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
The C S A P W A D Collective is comprised of five community organizations in the east side and we work with a target population of one hundred and eighty thousand residents. You can refer to our letter about our, what we urge you to do around the budget. I want you to, I want to urge you to invest in our city services staff to address the hundreds of job vacancies that should be filled in order to provide our community with the needed services to make our community thriving and vibrant. If you provide fair wages that will attract people to fill these vacancies and to keep our current city staff here, you will ensure that you're addressing some of the systemic economic, racial and social inequities that our east side San Jose residents have endured for decades. Fair wages equals equitable services for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Good evening, Ron Maria with San Jose Arts Advocates, former San Jose Arts Commissioner and District Two resident. After more than a year of sheltering in place and zooming in and out, there's never been a more critical time for hope, inspiration, healing and the mental health benefits that arts and artists can bring to our communities. The impact of the pandemic on San Jose's creative, artistic and cultural industry has been devastating. These impacts have been felt the hardest by small arts businesses, nonprofits, predominantly in communities of color. As an arts advocate, I call on city leaders to support the mayor's June budget message, including critical funding for the recovery of our creative and artistic industry, fund the cultural grants program of the city at pre-pandemic levels, eight point three million in fiscal year nineteen to twenty, offset significant shortfalls in the T O T with American Rescue Plan funds, invest A R P funds and creative workforce development and in an economic relief program for San Jose artists, artists hit by the COVID nineteen pandemic and use an equity lens to guide all outreach engagement deliberations and decisions to keep programs accessible to our entire creative community in San Jose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Y N. Go ahead, Y N. Take yourself off mute and go ahead. We lost her. Tai Chu.
Hello, my name is Tai Chow Lee. I am a resident of San Jose and also a San Jose employee. I live in District Seven my whole life. I graduated both from undergrad and grad from San Jose State University and was lucky enough to get a job over at San Jose in the planning division. Been working here for almost six years. I specify in environmental planning. I echo a lot of what my colleagues already said tonight is that we are looking for a budget that would reflect the value of the city towards us and we are providing services to the city, but also services to city manager's office who provides support to you all to support the community. So other union bargain units are receiving a deserved increase and I hope that the city budget also extends the same to our group and to the public services that we provide to not only encourage people to come in and fill the vacancies that we have, but to also retain the current employees we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Go ahead, Virginia. Lost Virginia, Jennifer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Awesome, thank you. So my name is Jennifer Pioza and I've worked with the city of San Jose for seven years as an urban planner in PBCE. I'm the planning division subject matter expert for Development Services Transformation Team Technology Updates. I've served on the E O C as the lead for our virtual community engagement team where we train city staff to use our digital outreach tools during shelter in place. I'm also our supervising planner overseeing all of our urban village planning efforts where we'll see most of the growth for our jobs and housing that we're planning. And each year, we inevitably see more and more of our colleagues and friends who make the difficult choice to leave city employment as they cannot. who make the difficult choice to leave city employment as they cannot afford to support their families on the wages we receive. It is demoralizing to work and review projects and bring them before the council when we ourselves cannot live in these projects and we cannot stay in the community that we are a part of and want to remain a part of. The budget directly reflects the council's values, and I ask that you show that you value all city staff by supporting the wage increases we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Allegra?
Hi, my name is Allegra Matner and I'm an arborist technician with the Department of Transportation. I'm one of three arborist technicians for the department, and we are responsible for the maintenance and ordinance enforcement of nearly 300,000 trees. At this point, we can only serve as a complaint-driven program for our trees rather than a proactive program. These are the only field arborist positions for the city and do not even address the remaining 1.8 million trees in our community forest. Trees are responsible for benefits which not only improve quality of life, but also provide real economic benefits to our city. Many tonight have mentioned the raise that the police received that was not enjoyed by the rest of us. There have also been calls for alternatives to police intervention. In addition to the many options mentioned today, a healthy forest can help alleviate some of those issues at the source. They clean the air and help reduce crises from pollution-related diseases. They reduce crime. They reduce traffic speeds and many other benefits. We need better wages for more employees.
Thank you. Joseph?
Greetings. My name is Joe Harity. I'm a resident of District Six and a longtime social sector leader working on behalf of children and youth in San Jose and Santa Clara County. I spent the past 16 years on the ground in community working alongside many of our least-resourced community members. I'm an advocate for children and youth. I want San Jose to be the best city in the United States for families, children, and youth. I would like to see American Rescue Plan resources directed to the necessary infrastructure to create a true opportunity ecosystem. To do that, we must think in systems and involve those with the most to gain or lose by our success. I'm concerned that the full budget indicates these resources will end up creating temporary one-off programs for our least-resourced young people, just as we did after the American Recovery and Reinvestment Dollars of the Great Recession. I encourage the council to drive investments in coordinated and coherent systems for youth and young adults that catalyze our current investments like SJ Aspires, SJ Works, We O U Services, San Jose Promise, and other programs. We should be investing in forging and tightening systems that we can sustain after these one-time dollars wind down.
Thank you, Joe. Chris?
Hi, my name is Chris Master de Casa. I'm an acting senior landscape designer for the Public Works Department, and I've been working at the city for almost 19 years. In that time that I've been here, I've worked on a number of high-priority council initiatives, including the Lake Cunningham Action Sports Park, Happy Hollow Park and Zoo, and more recently, I oversaw the completion of one of three emergency housing facilities at Rue Ferrari. I remember when employees like myself were asked to take a 10% pay cut, and it's frustrating to me that 10 years have gone by and I'm still not even back to the compensation level I was back then. Meanwhile, the cost of living in District Nine, where I live, continues to skyrocket, and the demand for city services continues to grow. I'd love being able to live where I work and design facilities for my families, family, friends, and neighbors to use. And I've always put in a little extra effort to do what it takes to deliver these projects. I want to continue to provide a high level of service to my community, but we need you to do the same by investing in city services and giving architects and engineers a competitive wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Francis?
Hello, thank you and good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eva Akman. I have been an employee with the city of San Jose for the past four years. I work with the Environmental Services Department, currently on the cap to improvement program at the Regional Waste Water Facility. I just want to speak to the need for equitable wages for our city staff and the fact that, you know, I've been at the cap to improvement program two years now, and we are trying to deliver a $1.4 billion program with a greater than 10% vacancy rate. And it's not something that has been happening just over the few years. It's been going on for a while now, and it's just not sustainable. And it's kind of ironic because we end up having to rely on consultants to fill some of these specialty positions that could maybe be provided by city staff if we offer equitable wages. And the longer on the city is paying more for those services using consultants. So again, just reiterating, we need to provide a city staff equitable wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyndon? Lyndon?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm Lyndon Shea from Environmental Services and I live in District 10. I appreciate that my job allows me to be of service to the community, especially during the pandemic. I'm blessed to work with great colleagues who can work in other local cities that pay appreciably more than San Jose does. In fact, we just lost a great employee to Portland where he can afford a house. According to HUD, a household earning less than $94,000 in Santa Clara County is classified as low income. I've been here 23 years and I can't say I make a ton above 94K. As others have demonstrated, non-sworn staff have proven that we too are worthy of a 3.85% increase like PD. When the city has needed us to make concessions, we have. Now the city has an opportunity to address what we lost and needs to step up to the plate. I urge the council to vote for an equitable wage commensurate with the PD, one that will bring us more in line with our counterparts in other cities. But I guess I'm just urging you members, Jones and Foley, I'm sorry to not see more council members on this Zoom. I appreciate your consideration and wish Dave Sykes a happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela?
Hello, and thank you for your time. I'm a budget analyst who has worked for Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services for about five years. I can name a number of employees who have come and gone in that time. They left to go to City X, County Y, and Water District Z because the wages in San Jose that San Jose was paying them wasn't competitive. The city has a vacancy problem. This in turn translates into a service problem. Passing a budget that pays all employees equitably will help the city better serve the community. The budget reflects the city's priorities. I urge the council to pass a budget that is equitable to all employees who support San Jose. And I also ask all who are present here to deliver the message that the employees are sending to those who are not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emily?
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hi, my name is Emily Rangel. Thank you, Mayor and city council members for hearing my public comments. I am calling to advocate my full support with Councilmember Magdalena Carrasco and trustee Peter Ortiz in support of the East San Jose Rescue Plan. I'm advocating for the creation of an Office of Youth Development, the hiring of an East San Jose Small Business Manager, establishing an art and cultural district on the Alum Rock Corridor, and funding for art and cultural projects. As we've seen the tragedies and trauma faced in our communities within this year, we need this equitable recovery proposal to revitalize East San Jose as we handle the gravity of COVID effects and move into COVID-19 recovery. San Jose cannot leave our small businesses who have operated for generations on the beautiful East San Jose to fend for themselves as they recover. I am calling in the mayor and council members of San Jose to invest in the community and support local merchants. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Fernando?
Hi, good evening. My name is Fernando Lopez. I've been with the city now for almost 24 years. Seventeen and a half with the Mayor's Gang Task Force, and the last six years with the code enforcement. And I just, I want to speak on behalf of all the frontline workers, including myself. Last summer, I did almost three months with the EOC. I had to send my family away because of my assignment, because I was concerned about COVID. But I've also served the EOC when the floods came a few years back, as well as back in 1998 when I first started. One of the biggest things for us is equitable wages. We have lost a lot of code enforcement staff and PBCE staff this year. But just looking at the 2% versus a 3.8%, I just look at where our employees valued, how are we going to demonstrate our value? Thank you.
Thank you. Esther?
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Oh, great. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Jones and honorable city council members. I know the hour is getting late. I'm here tonight in support of this budget and specifically three items as the executive director of Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence. In addition to recommendations of the Real Coalition and the East San Jose Peace Partnership, I urge your support of Councilmember Carrasco's memo on Budget Item 111, which specifically names Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence, the largest and only standalone agency focused on domestic violence, which is the most prevalent form of gender-based violence occurring in San Jose and Santa Clara County. She understands that peace in our community begins with peace in our homes and that help and support for the whole family is critical to having a healthy, safe community, including support for the survivor, the children, and the person who harms. The city of San Jose was the first funder of Nextdoor Solutions 50 years ago, then known as the Women's Alliance. And we ask that you join us in honoring our requests for general operational funding and launch us into our next 50 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arizo 1351?
Hello, my name is Sina. I'm working, I'm plantech engineer in PBC. I just wanted to share one story with you. My wife works in ICU for the kids. Just my first year at the city of San Jose, one night she called and she said she's not going to join for dinner because she has a two-years-old boy in a bed with parents on the side of the bed talking to him. And the burden of letting the parents know that their boy is not going to be the boy they knew anymore is on the shoulder of my wife. And the reason was that the older brother left the gate to the pool open, and the younger brother got drowned in the pool. It was two comments from a plantech engineer and the enforcement from the inspectors. Then no police department and no fire department would be needed. I think we really need to be treated equally. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to hear me out. Another city employee just calling about the fair, or I wanted to ring in about the fair and equitable wages. I'm sure very tough to try to balance the budget. But really, it does come down to the retention. I have seen so many of my colleagues in the five years, almost six years that I've worked for the city. So many of us, so many people have left. And it's really difficult to get the job done with constantly training people the basics. You know, it's like we need people in the middle range. And as many people mentioned, it's a stepping stone, and I've seen these things. And so we do need to offer a fair competitive wage so we can keep these talented people here at the city so we can provide better services and minimize our needs for more expensive specialty people. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew? Go ahead, Matthew.
Yes, thank you, Matthew Reed, Silicon Valley at Home, Vice Mayor Jones, Councilmember Foley. For many of us, these have been 15 months of severe hardship and trauma, but it has not been shared equally. Structurally, lower-wage communities, primarily communities of color, face a level of devastation, uncertainty, and trauma that many of us were spared. This uncertainty and trauma is not over and will not simply go away as we reopen as a city. Throughout this budget process, we've heard of a focus on equity and recovery. We support the Equity Agenda for Recovery put forth by the Real Coalition, which calls for transparent engagement with the most impacted communities about the prioritization of ARP funds. We must acknowledge that we face an impending eviction time bomb when the state moratorium expires at the end of this month. The hard truth is that the moratorium will expire before the available rental assistance resources have been distributed. Short-term and long-term impacts of eviction displacement on family stability, adult and child health.
Thank you, Matthew. Veronica?
Good evening, Mayor Licardo, Vice Mayor Jones, honorable council members. My name is Veronica Rocha, a proud lifelong resident of East San Jose, as are my mother, children, and extended family. Throughout this pandemic, our east side community experienced the highest rate of COVID-19 infections, resulting death and serious illness, including my cousin, who is still relearning to use his body after a two-month-long COVID coma. The east side community has been hit hard. Many of us are essential workers, hardworking, resilient, and hopeful. An integral part of San Jose, we need your help. And speaking in support of the East Side Rescue Plan, youth development, indeed, our children are our pride and future, and we need to invest in them. Green infrastructure, a tree canopy, we miss the large redwoods on Alum Rock Avenue and the beauty and well-being that nature and trees bring to our community. Small business relief, critical in getting financial support to aid in the recovery and reinvestment of our small business community, our comunidad, which entrepreneurship is a vital part of. I call for the support of the East San Jose Rescue Plan. Thank you for your.
Dana? Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So, my name is Dina Ali. I'm a member of the Association of Engineers and Architects. I'm an associate engineer at the Regional Waste Water Facility CIP program. I'm also a resident of San Jose, Alum Rock area. I have been serving the city for three years, delivering essential capital projects to keep our wastewater facility up and running. I'm here to say that 2% or 2.5% wage increase is not enough and doesn't pay rent. I'm a mother of two, and me and my husband work full-time, and we're still living paycheck to paycheck. What else can we do to afford living in the city that we serve? I urge all of our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and equally funds our frontline city workers, not just police officers. The work that we do for the city of San Jose is equally important and should be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela?
Hello, my name is Angela Johnson. I'm a supervisor in our 911 Police Communication Center, and I've served the city of San Jose for 27 years. Communications employees are the link between community and public safety 24 hours a day, 365 days a year during.
You got cut off. Come back in and we'll put you back in the queue. Darcy? Go ahead, Darcy.
Hi, my name is Darcy Green. I'm the executive director of Latinas Cancer. We serve the Latino community around issues of cancer, cancer prevention, and overall health. I'm here to support the Equity Investment Agenda for Recovery, particularly, I'd like to highlight number one, where we call for investment in continued robust relief to ensure that those harmed by the pandemic aren't further harmed. Because we serve the low-income Latino community, we've seen firsthand our organization, how the lack of resources, including childcare support, additional cash assistance, food, workforce programs, as well as coordination within, issues within, coordination and prioritization within and among local governments has really impacted our clients' ability to prioritize their health. And as a healthcare organization, we understand that these resources are vital and crucial in order to ensure the recovery for the Latino community in the long term. So, with that, we stand in solidarity with these recommendations and urge you to support the entire agenda in all six priority areas. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Amber?
Yes, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm here to show my support for the city workers who are at the bargaining table right now and to urge the council to pass a budget that provides fair compensation for its municipal employees. I am a government employee myself, not for the city of San Jose, but a different municipality. And I've seen firsthand what happens when government employees are not adequately compensated for their vital and essential community work. People leave, positions go unfilled, the employees left behind are forced to work longer hours, wear more hats, and they either burn out or they leave for greener pastures. The only way around that is to provide fair competitive wages to San Jose's municipal employees, and I urge the council to do just that.
Thank you. Moses?
Greetings, honorable Vice Mayor and City Council. My name is Moses Arroyo. I have been proudly serving the city of San Jose for the last 20 years. My current position is sewer maintenance superintendent. My role is to ensure that the sanitary and storm infrastructure is operational, which protects public and environmental health. This is the perfect opportunity for this council to show the city values, services such as our community centers, homeless outreach, outreach programs, along with employment retention, which is the only way institutional knowledge. along with employment retention, which is the only way institutional knowledge is acquired. In conclusion, your budget decisions tonight are a reflection of the value that the city has for its residents and its workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosie?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
My name is Rosie Yanos. I served City of San Jose for the last two years as a project manager for Public Works CPAS. I lived in San Jose District for the last seven years. Currently, I'm supporting in the design and construction of measured T projects. During the pandemic, we have continued to deliver our services to our community without interruption and to the best of our abilities. I am here today because I believe City of San Jose needs a budget that prioritizes city services. The budget is a reflection of city council has for our residents and city workers. I urge all our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen? Go ahead, Karen.
Hi, I'm Karen Evans, a city employee. I worked for the city for 30 years and this has been the hardest year in memory with the pandemic, protests, fires, and so forth. Most city staff over the last year have placed their lives on the line by working in areas where COVID is prevalent or in areas where the public can be abusive and working in positions doing twice the amount of work due to vacancies. Staff are verbally told how valuable they are, but when it comes to showing that in a monetary way, the city shows we're not important. This is not new to us, but this year can you at least stand behind your words for once? It's time to put up or shut up. It's time to show your respect for those staff who have kept the city running day-to-day by investing and providing livable wages to staff members. We're asking you to listen to our negotiators. We are calling on you to listen to what we have to say and act appropriately by providing higher livable wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel?
Hola? Me escuchan? Hola, hablo para apoyar el plan de rescate hecho por nuestra concejal Carrasco. Necesitamos ayudar a nuestros negocios que sufren ahorita. Por favor, pongan más árboles. Hay muchas mamás que caminamos y hace mucha calor. Nuestros niños necesitan programas. No queremos perderlos a las gangas. Muchos están deprimidos con esta pandemia. Por favor, apoyen este plan de rescate de la concejal Carrasco. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Raymond?
Okay.
Go ahead, Raymond.
Start again.
Hi, my name is Raymond. I'm living San Jose all my life. San Jose is a diverse community and the service is not keeping up. I urge the council to offer an equitable budget to support our central city worker. Worker must have competitive way with gray so the city worker can stay and work in San Jose. That we saw our value, we value our, so we value our worker, single day worker, so I urge the city, the mayor, pack the purchase to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Moore?
Yes, good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager Sykes. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a city employee with Public Works, serving the city as an engineer for the past 14 years. I'm speaking tonight in support of all of my fellow city employees and city residents, being a District 9 resident myself. I stand before you to implore that you, council members, prioritize and recognize the value of city staff's work, especially during this past year's pandemic. I ask that you show courage and heart by acknowledging our worth fairly and justly through our compensation. Please do so by your actions and decisions and not merely by your words. Please do not undervalue your residents by undervaluing your city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We?
Hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hi, my name is Wee. I'm a resident of San Jose, District 3. I'm also engineer with the Department of Public Works. Right now, I'm working at the Regional Wastewater Facility and my projects consist of rehabilitation and modernizing that facility. So at the beginning of the pandemic, there was a lot of uncertainty about whether or not our project would be able to operate during the pandemic, but fortunately, we were able to work through that despite other restrictions. So as for me, I came in every day for work to manage my projects, and that said, I want to make two key points. So by me coming into work every day, I know that my work contributed to saving the city millions and millions, millions and millions of dollars because we avoided expensive claims from the contractor had we stopped them from working. Secondly, I also felt like I exposed myself to a lot of health risks by coming into work and managing my project. In fact, we know I've encountered a lot of people who caught COVID while I was there, so I just want to summarize by saying like I felt betrayed knowing that we only got 2% wage increase after all the effort that I put and risked my health to keep the city running.
Thank you, Wee. Austin?
Hello, my name is Austin Carroll and I have served the City of San Jose for 15 years as a library worker. I have lived here all my life and served my community with devotion and pride as a library assistant at the Pearl Avenue branch. San Jose Public Library has helped with countless initiatives to help serve our community. During the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, when face coverings were in short supply, the library stepped up. In a matter of just a few weeks, the library produced over 2,000 face coverings, including 3D-printed face masks and face shields, as well as hand-sewn cloth face masks. These face coverings were distributed to hospitals, health clinics, and senior living facilities across the city. This is just a small example of the devotion not only library workers, but City of San Jose workers have to serve, serving our community. We need a budget that is equitable for our diverse essential workers. We can't give wage increases to police officers and leave behind our staff in libraries, parks and rec, airport, and more. The budget is a reflection of the city values.
Thank you, Austin. Elena?
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Alana Lowry. I'm a resident of San Jose and in District 6 and have worked and lived in San Jose for almost eight years. I work in the Environmental Services Department as an environmental services specialist and now supervising an environmental services specialist on the residential garbage and recycling program for almost eight years. Solid waste collection is an essential service. I have a 17-month-old toddler with new expenses and was very disappointed to learn that the city is giving my police and fire colleagues an almost 4% pay increase, which says that they're valued over my colleagues and me. We can't give wage increases to police and fire, to police officers, and leave behind our librarians, cleaning crews, airport workers, and more. We need a budget that's equitable for all of our diverse essential workers, and I'm urging council to work with our unions that are in negotiations and pass a budget that's equitable for all. Thanks.
Thank you. Lynn?
Hi, my name is Lynn Toh and I served at the City of San Jose for six years. I'm currently an Associate Engineer with the Public Works Department. I was also born and raised and currently reside in the City of San Jose, District Number 7. I have helped deliver capital improvement projects to repair and rehabilitate the sanitary sewer system within the City of San Jose. I love the city and I love working here, but I'm tired of the high turnover rates. It seems many people use City of San Jose as a stepping stone and then leave the other, and leave to other government agencies for higher competitive wages. As a millennial, it seems impossible to own a house in San Jose in a safe neighborhood or within the county of Santa Clara. We need a budget that is equitable to, for all our diverse essential workers. We need to recruit and retain a competitive workforce and that starts with respecting with respecting and fully funding our staff. I urge all of city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and provide a budget where we can afford to live in the city we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Lena? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Lena Scambadi and I've been a City of San Jose employee for more than 29 years, the last six years being a code inspector. I've worked in multiple departments in my city career, as well as worked in the EOC during this pandemic. This next contract will not necessarily benefit me as I will retire soon, but I'm speaking today to support all city employees. As I first began as a code inspector, I was shocked to find out that in the tens largest city in the US, San Jose code inspectors are one of the lowest paid in Northern California, as are many other positions within the City of San Jose, in a city with a population of over 1 million, where the cost of living increases, yet the wages don't keep up. We hire new employees only for them to get training and experience and then leave to higher-paying municipalities. The President Biden's American Rescue Plan is sending 223 million in federal relief to the City of San Jose. I urge all of our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds all of our frontline city workers, not just specific departments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Taylor?
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hi, my name is Talib Atzalazida. I'm a landscape architect and a city employee. I just wanted to share a thought with the council that every budget initiative that's been presented for next year's budget will be executed by city employees like myself, every single one of them. And we've heard tonight from the community members who spoke on these initiatives about housing assistance, providing equity to the east side, providing food services, even planting trees, which as a landscape architect, we stereotypically do a lot of. And this can all get done and it's exciting, important work to be done, and the people who are actually going to get it done are city employees, working alongside the community we love so much. We hear you and we're ready to work with you. So please, city council, help us get your initiatives done as elected officials who have a vested interest in the successful execution of this next year's budget. You have nothing to lose and everything to gain by investing in city services. It guarantees the success of your budget initiatives because you'll actually have worker bees to get it done. We all love what we do. We want to do a good job, but we don't want to do three jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Lizzie?
Hi, my name is Lizzie Nolan. I'm a Senior Librarian at the King Library. I have served the City of San Jose for five years and I'm a District 3 resident. I am proud and passionate to be working at the library and serving the youth. Two things I want to highlight. We've done emergency operations work with the digital inclusion team. We sent out 3,000 hotspots to get much-needed connectivity to city residents. I've also helped work on a virtual homework club that had 1,000 students in attendance over this really important year. I will happily say again what fellow city workers have been saying all night and we will keep saying until you really hear us. A budget is a reflection of values. We need to be paid, we need pay equity to do the best work for our San Jose residents. We are community workers. We work, we live, we raise families in the city. The city needs to invest just as much in us as we do in our work for San Jose. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jess?
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right. Hello, my name is Jessica Gutierrez. I'm an artist and teacher from James Lake High School. I am calling in support of the East San Jose Rescue Plan proposed by Councilmember Carrasco. The San Jose community has been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Even before the pandemic, the East San Jose community has faced challenges with access to proper infrastructure and overall investment and support by the City of San Jose. Additionally, as historic colonial murals have been destroyed and more people have been displaced from San Jose, the city must invest in the small businesses, the arts and culture, so the community can thrive here. Please consider supporting the East San Jose Rescue Plan. I'd also like to urge you to fund the San Jose creative community as a whole, as many of our art spaces have been closed or badly hurt during the pandemic. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The person with the number ending in 6496.
Good evening, council and Vice Mayor Chappy. This is Angela Torado. I am the voice of San Jose, the mother of Princess Angelina, a District 7 resident, but everywhere. We have to protect and serve our city and city workers that work through rain, pandemics, and traumas every day. We have to provide the funding for special education and staff as well. My own daughter benefited and made a 720-degree progress to be able to graduate eighth grade and move on to high school because of their accelerated educational program. I am in support of Councilmember Carrasco's budget for East Side San Jose, Budget Item Number 111, and we need to protect our city and its residents by providing a fair and ethical wage for our city workers, educators, and funding for East Side San Jose. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela. Ed?
Hi, my name is Ed. I've served the City of San Jose for almost three years in your IT department during the pandemic.
Hey, Ed. I could barely, we could barely hear you. Can you speak up a little bit, please?
During the pandemic, my department and I worked long hours, enabling employees to work remotely and maintain essential services. We continue to push the City of San Jose to become the smartest city in the nation. We are majorly understaffed. We can barely keep the lights on. Employees are taking on extra workload. We have trouble retaining good people. Please approve a budget that respects all city employees. We have to put our safety on the line as frontline workers too. We deserve an equitable wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Mimi?
Hi, family, children, essential workers, and small businesses should be a priority in this budget. The state of those vulnerable populations has a direct impact in our city. Prioritizing them in this budget will have a positive impact for everyone. Today, I join my voice to the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits and the East Side San Jose Peace in asking you to fund family and children. As a business advocate, I joined the multiple calls for San Jose Business Recovery, between 10 to 30 million. Essential workers are an integral part of every business that has been closing in East San Jose. Lastly, I ask you to allocate funding for local CBOs who have been on ground zero, see three sheltering place now and during their recovery. And no, there are not too many of us CBOs in East San Jose serving businesses. Let's just be grateful that we are all here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tim? Go ahead, Tim.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Thank you to the respectable city council for listening to my comment. My name is Tim Tran and I live in the city of San Jose for 14 years in District 7 and I am a sanitary engineer at the Regional Wastewater Facility for five years. I have to manage multiple capital improvement projects of an aging wastewater facility to treat the wastewater and serve more than 1.4 million residents. My household bills get going up, my insurance went up 20%, all the bill gone up, and it harder for me to support my family. I order council to approve the purchase that can provide equitable wage to the city employees so I can afford the same life that I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Hello, my name is Peter Bennett and I am a former employee of the City of San Jose. I worked in the Department of Transportation for about five and a half years and recently left a few months ago. So I guess I represent the turnover that we're hearing about tonight on the call. I'm speaking in support of my colleagues who, for example, in my case, when I started, I had one program to manage and by the time I left, I had three-ish programs and other things that I did for the department. So, and the one program that I was, you know, hired for, the bike parking program wasn't getting its full attention anymore. When the pandemic hit, I was enthusiastic about working on dining in the streets and walking in the streets. I thought as a transportation department, we could have done some really interesting things, but my department director and my colleagues were not too interested in that and seemed sort of overworked, so it just, some examples of what we're talking about when we have high employee turnover.
Thank you, Peter. Madalena?
Hi, my name is Madalena LaPrestia. Can you hear me?
Can you speak up? We can barely hear you.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Much better.
Okay, sorry. My name is Madalena Lapusti and I have served with the seat of San Jose for almost four years as an engineer tech with Environmental Services Department. I'm also MEF steward. I've been extensively working on site during the pandemic to deliver capital projects at the regional wastewater facility while supporting our community. My husband and myself, we both work for the seat of San Jose. We moved from the private sector to serve the public and make a difference in our community. Our city staff is now being appreciated and a lot of our colleagues have left the city for better wages, opportunities and retirement, creating a more difficult environment to work in and feeling that the work we perform is not valued. Please do not fill our city position with the private contractors who have not invested their personal time and given their heart for the interest for the city's residents. Rather, please fill our vacancies, provide fair and equitable wages, support and show your appreciation to city staff by giving them fair wages so that they continue to make San Jose a wonderful place to live. Thank you and for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Kristy?
Hello. My name is Kristy Winley. I'm a police data specialist and I've worked for the city of San Jose for eight and a half years as a records employee at the police department. I've seen wage and I have not seen wage increases that others on the police department have seen. Throughout the pandemic, my union continued to operate 24/7, ensuring police records were available to all that needed them. The many essential workers represented by MEF were told over and over that we were essential and appreciated. But the city's current contract offer does not communicate that. I believe the city workers should be able to afford to live in the city. And the whole time I've worked for San Jose, I've never been able to do so. I, like many other city employees, commute on average two hours a day. It's therefore not surprising that we cannot retain employees who get paid significantly more in neighboring cities. I urge you to acknowledge the value of essential city employees with the budget, which I believe can ultimately save the city money in training and recruiting. This is not just a contract negotiation issue. This is your opportunity to show.
Thank you, Kristy. Jessica?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jessica. I've worked for the city of San Jose for, coming up on nine years. I live in District 7 for as long as I'll be allowed to as wages that were paid don't really afford me to even live in the same city that I work in. The city is really just doing all of its employees a disservice by not showing the respect in the form of paying us wages that we deserve to have for the work that we're doing. While I don't mean to diminish any others' work that's being done in the city, I'd like all of them to consider how they would feel if they needed to call 911 for them or maybe their children or an elderly family member and someone was not there to answer the call by the city continuing to not pay us the wages that we deserve. That could be a risk that they're taking as we're one of the lowest staffed agencies and by far the lowest paid. I invite any of the council members, if they need a reason to see why we think we deserve what we deserve, come up on one of our 14-hour shifts on 4th of July. We'll be protecting everyone's life and property. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam?
You. Okay, can you hear me now?
Loud and clear.
Loud and clear. All right. Second try. Here we go. Yes, my name is Samenz Aldo. I've worked for the city of San Jose since 1989. I started as a teenager and I've been full-time for over 26 years. I'm a maintenance supervisor in the sewer division. And I just basically want to say like everyone else has been saying, just pay us our dues. I've tried my best to stay in the city and serve it. I unfortunately had to leave recently, so now I'm also a commuter as I can't afford to live in the town that I was born in. And so now when you need me, it's going to take me two and a half hours to get there. Don't let that happen to the rest of us. That's what we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Hello, my name is Lacey R. and I have been a city employee for over 10 years. For the last four years, I have served as a recreation supervisors. Recreation supervisors develop, implement and administer community programs for our residents. Programs provided by our dedicated supervisors include education and training, childcare literacy, senior nutrition and community outreach. Our programs provide residents with high-quality services they may not have access to elsewhere. The recreation supervisors have been on the front line since day one of the pandemic. We implemented new innovative ways to continue essential programming, including feeding our most vulnerable population and providing emergency childcare and learning pods to our youth in our community. Please invest in us and make us a priority. We value and believe in our services we provide and continue to provide high-quality programs daily. Please address the wage equity and retention issue within our organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Yes, my name is Shannon Mira. I've worked for the city of San Jose for 19 years. I am a public safety radio dispatcher currently assigned to our training unit. During the pandemic, we were not allowed to work from home. Every day we continue to work and put the needs of the residents of San Jose first. San Jose is the third largest city in California and the 10th largest city in the United States. With the population continuing to increase year by year, our staffing levels must grow up. We need to be given more positions to keep up with the call volume. We are the largest city in Santa Clara County with the highest call volume and the largest workload, yet we continue to be the lowest paid. This needs to change. To keep qualified and skilled employees working for the city of San Jose, we need to be paid competitively. We deal with life and death situations every day. We are not treated as valued employees, which is reflected in our low pay and our low benefits. This needs to change.
Thank you, Shannon. Rachel?
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
My name is Rachel Atkins. I am the animal health technician or veterinary technician at Happy Hollow Zoo. I'm also the treasurer for MEF. My coworkers and I have worked through a number of crises and disasters. In the last few years, we've moved our animals out of danger when Coyote Creek flooded. We worked outside during wildfire season and we've been at work every day during the pandemic. We risk our own health because we're invested in our animals and the work that we do every day. Happy Hollow provides a place for our community to learn and grow. As essential workers, we appreciate the recognition. However, words alone don't pay rent or pay for gas for my coworkers to commute from Santa Cruz, San Leandro or Modesto. It's time for the city of San Jose to invest in its workers so that we can continue to support our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The person with the number ending in 3762.
Hey, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hi, my name is Michael. My wife works for the city of San Jose. And the other day she told me she got a, she's, she's going to get a pay raise of 2.5%. I told her, honey, inflation is approaching 5% and increasing. You aren't getting a pay raise, you're getting a pay cut. I yield my time. Thanks.
Thank you. Brad? Go ahead, Brad. Lost Brad. I am going to hand it back over to the mayor to continue public comments.
Hey, Vice Mayor, and my apologies for my absence. I have been listening for some time here. I had an urgent situation that took me away. Jasmine Torado, welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jasmine Torado. I was born and raised in San Jose and I am the daughter of Rosanna Carrasco. I have watched my dedicated, hardworking mother participate in making our city a safe place. She has worked for the city since I was eight years old. I'm now almost 30. So not only has she been a role model for myself and my friends, but for our family as well. During the pandemic, I watched my mother leave our safe place, better known as our home, and put herself in danger as well as our family to serve the city's hotspot and the people who live there. Not only is this scary for our family, but to imagine how worried or scared my mother could have been. However, not once have I heard her complain about the work or what she had to do. This doesn't stop with her, but it also extends to her friends and colleagues I have met throughout the years. Seeing what these people do for our community, it's only right to be upset at how they're being repaid. They deserve a livable wage increase. Take care of the people who are taking care of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Tuttle, welcome.
I'm Mr. Mayor. Matt Tuttle, San Jose firefighters, Local 230 president. Since the pandemic started, my brothers and sisters responded every single day to COVID-related incidents. But without the work of our dispatchers, we couldn't get the job done. I stand today in solidarity with my brothers and sisters throughout all city unions for equitable pay and for a call to all city leaders to invest in your employees before you lose more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ed Solis, welcome, Ed.
Hello, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Ed Solis. I'm a principal construction inspector in the Department of Public Works. I've been with the city for almost 15 years. I just wanted to say that we need a budget that is equitable for all of our diverse essential workers. We can't give a wage increase to police officers and leave behind our librarians, cleaning crews, airport workers, construction inspectors and more. This is essential and valuable work that our whole community is relying on. The budget is a reflection of the value the city has for its residents and city workers. President Biden's American Rescue Plan is sending 223 million in federal relief to the city of San Jose. I urge all of our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline city workers. Please consider and give us our full pay 3%. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne Cabral, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. My name is Yvonne Cabral. I was born and raised in San Jose and have served the city of San Jose for 25 years. I'm a network engineer within the hardworking library IT department. My team did not stop during the pandemic from transitioning 500-plus users to work from home while tackling how disenfranchised residents can have access to the internet. My team helped with deploying 13,200 hotspots to San Jose schools and to the library community. We also deployed 300 iPads and 600 Chromebooks to help bridge the digital divide. All of these extra projects on top of trying to reopen 25 public libraries to our communities. I'm sure you have heard the term reciprocity. Many IT coworkers have left for higher paying positions such as the county of Santa Clara, which honor reciprocity and therefore retire out at a higher salary, which the city of San Jose is obligated to pay at the higher rate. Why not pay us our higher salary now to show you value your workers? The city of San Jose wants to be recognized as a leader amongst cities. Be in the news for showing how you value all your essential workers equally and not just police and fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Fire prevention, welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I can sit here and tell you how much money you'd be losing by not keeping our salary competitive. But my colleagues have more than covered this. I'm here today to say it's astounding and disgusting that we have to go through these hoops to have our voices heard. I have personally worked through a pandemic, risking health to continue inspections and still I come back to work. Coming back from inspections, I've been stuck in my car in the middle of the BLM protests and still I come back to work. Employees have been put in harm's way during the VTA shootings and still they come back to work. Treat us the way we treat the city with love and compassion. This is all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Johnson?
Hello, my name is Angela Johnson. I am a supervisor in our 911 Police Communications Center and I've served the city of San Jose for 27 years. Communications employees are the link between community and public safety 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. During the pandemic and positive outbreaks in our work areas, we kept going to work and were committed to serve our community. We put ourselves and our families at risk to ensure public safety. It's vital that the city provides fair, equitable and competitive wages and benefits to attract and retain a skilled workforce. To offer MEF and IFPT workers less than the cost of living raise is extremely discouraging. In the spirit of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, I ask no favor for being a public servant. All I ask of our city administration is to take their feet off of our necks. Thank you.
Thank you. SBCN?
Hello, Mayor Liccardo and esteemed city council members. My name is Nick Quata and I am the policy director for nonprofits. Today nonprofits have come out to show our full support for the equity investment agenda for recovery. I'd like to highlight the third of the six parties where the equity investment agenda calls recovery, calls for big investments in alternatives to policing and incarceration, including prevention and alternative responses to community crisis and trauma. We believe that going big in community crisis response as well as prevention and reentry programs, especially for our youth, are both the right thing to do and economically smart. We should make these investments in a way that does not increase law enforcement. In addition, we would like to also stress the need for the city to implement a complete and comprehensive process to solicit public input into the use of these funds. Previous conversations indicate that the city will hold back nearly $50 million until decide what to do with those funds in the fall. We cannot let community fall through the cracks. Families devastated by the pandemic need your attention now and we must ensure their safety and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Harland?
Hi, my name is Cindy Harland. I am MEF chief steward. I have worked at the police department for 12 years. I currently work in the systems development department. My department keeps the computer-aided dispatch and laptops and officer patrol cars up and running, just to name a few. Without us, 911 calls would not come in, nor would officers be dispatched out. As an essential worker and employee, I too, along with many other essential workers, continuously worked through the pandemic. We have a major understaffing crisis. Over 700 city jobs are not staffed. We need to recruit and retain a competitive workforce and that starts with fair and equitable wages for all. The budget is a reflection of the value the city council has for our residents and city workers. I urge our city council to pass a budget that invests in our public services and funds our frontline workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Hillary Thorson?
Hello, I'm Hillary Thorson. I serve as library and education commissioner for District 6 and I'm a librarian. Thank you for giving the library some additional funding. However, it is still only one-time funding and it means that 12 out of 25 library branches will be open four hours less a week than they were pre-pandemic. Over the course of the year, that means they are closing estimated additional 26 days out of the year, which is close to a month. The libraries have been steadily restoring service and hours since the Great Recession. This cut is a huge setback for the library and our community and would have a lasting impact affecting those with the least resources the most. Supporting our libraries here is essential for our city's democracy, our city's education and our city's children. Libraries are the city's main connection to providing educational services. Please fund them like you fund public safety and fully restore funding to all 25 branches. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Du Lam?
Hi, my name is Du Lam. I've been with the city for over 14 years. I am a member of AEA and associate engineer for the Bureau of Fire Prevention. We are essential for life safety and property protection. I have worked every day during the pandemic doing planner reviews and inspections, keeping our cities running. Our wages have never recovered after the reduction from the last recession. We ask the city to help keep San Jose safe with a competitive wage increase to retain employees that continue their hard work and providing the best services possible for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Phil?
Yes, hello. I just wanted to say, say a few things. Obviously, you know, we've heard, you know, so many of the callers speaking about how it's very important to give them fair wages and equitable wages. Another point I want to make, however, is that not only is it just to do, not only is it just something we need to do because police are getting paid more and it's fair to pay them more, but we really need to decrease the police salaries. These are bloated budgets. They are less capable than a lot of these other city workers. They have less degrees, less education, less capability, less emotion, like, like less ability to manage their emotions. And so, you know, that's another thing too, but.
Thank you. Jason Day?
Hi, Mr.
Hi, Mayor. I spoke earlier.
Okay, thank you, Jason. ADL. Person with the moniker says ADL.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Liccardo. I'd like to especially thank Vice Mayor Chappy Jones, Councilmember Pam Foley, and and city manager Dave Sykes. They've been apparent on the screen for most of this call. I don't know if other council members have been listening in on this. I hope they or their staff have been taking all these comments. Seems to me tonight, I had a speech prepared, but I'm going to skip that. It seems like there's been sort of a bit of an employee takeover. City workers have courageously continued to serve the needs of San Jose's residents throughout this unprecedented pandemic. Workers have put in hours of uncompensated overtime, risk the health of themselves and their families, used their own personal resources without compensation, and have shown innovation and dedication finding ways to continue meeting the needs of our residents. The budget is a reflection, not only of our residents, but of our city workers' values. We need to invest in both. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Akalan.
Hello, this is Akalan.
Hi, Akalan.
I've been working with San Jose Fire Department Fire Prevention Unit for over three years as part of the development team. I moved from New York City from public sector to from private sector to public sector to serve public and for better living standards. I'm hitting myself for moving here because I can't afford to save any or buy a house in the Bay Area. I've been supporting development services, and I'm always under pressure to complete my plan review inspections in short time. I hear complaints in firsthand from the developers and committee members. Our department is self-sufficient. From budget perspective, the fees are paid by the developers and propose to increase again, but our wage increase is so minimal. We we used to have express plan review and expedited inspections, so.
Akalan, I'm sorry. Okay. Akalan, if you're able to raise your hand, come back. We'll let you finish there. Virginia Farley. Virginia, we're not able to hear you right now. It appears you're still muted. If you could unmute your device, we'll be able to hear you. Virginia, your device is still muted. If you could unmute it, we could hear you. Okay, Virginia, go ahead and raise your hand if you're able to sort out the challenge with the device. Lupe Redarte Velazquez.
Hi, this is Chris. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Lupe Redarte Velazquez. Her statement is she's a senior analyst in.
Chris, we just lost you.
The question she I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, the question she has is how is the city of San Jose dedicated to the police reform and combating racial injustice? If the city is giving police a higher wage increase than other city staff employees who provide essential services to keep the city running and provide residents with a variety of high-quality services? She's worked for the city for over twelve years in many different capacities, helped build youth skills, associated dislocated numi workers with reemployment, and during the past seven years worked HR employment. The city of San Jose has problems retaining good talent because we are not paying our employees competitively compared to other Bay Area government agencies. She still has not been able to make up the ten percent pay cut reduction from twenty ten.
Thank you. Waian Trum.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Waian.
We at Mothers Out Front heartily support the many calls today for an equitable recovery. We support a fair wage for city workers. We also support CM Carrasco's proposal to plant more trees. It's good for health, for removing carbon and cleaning the air, for reducing stress, and for local businesses to have more foot traffic. If we plant trees regeneratively, they pull down even more carbon from the atmosphere. Using compost instead of man-made fertilizer makes the soil more porous, which absorbs more water, reducing water usage, and it will only need to be applied once, all of which reduce cost. More trees help protect the lungs of infants and children and help protect against asthma and which can lead to lifelong medical costs. Trees encourage more walking, biking, and playing, which improves health and reduces obesity and helps get cars off the road. Trees planted regeneratively help us respond to climate. Let's plant them with our hearts full of equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Young. And I hope I didn't mispronounce your name. I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Jim. Senior premise specialist at City of San Jose PPC Department. I've been serving community for the last four years. Purpose specialists have been asking for fee studies since two thousand nineteen to get our wage competitive to keep our staff. City rejected our request at the bargaining table due to road retention rate and low vacancy rate. I would like to let Mayor, Councilmember, and everybody know that city's wrong. Purpose specials have over twenty-four percent vacancy rate. And between two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one, we lost we lost eleven employees to different cities and departments. You're the tenth largest city, but one of the lowest places in the Bay Area. San Jose Building Department get a lot of media attention due to companies like Google coming to the city, and cities promise to provide housing to the community. Purpose specialists are doing our best to serve our community. However, due to competitive wage, you're always short-staffed and losing our hard-working employees to different cities. Purpose special have been working through the pandemic to serve our community. Please invest, please invest now, purpose specialists and city workers to keep being and then stop being a training ground for the other cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Adam, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As a city of San Jose employee for almost five years, I and my local twenty-one and MEF colleagues at the airport have been working throughout the pandemic to ensure the safety of the traveling public. I believe the city must give its employees an equitable and competitive contract that adequately values us and allows us to continue making a positive difference in our community. How the city values its workers is, to me, a strong indication of how it values its residents. We cannot properly serve our residents when we cannot afford to live in our city. Please consider how valuing employees will ensure a livable future for everyone here.
Thank you. Thank you. Delphina Gallardo, you're our final speaker.
Hello, my name is Delphina Gallardo. I was born and raised in San Jose. For the past fourteen years, I've served my community working for the San Jose Police Communications. I'm a nine one one dispatcher who's currently assigned to our training unit. I have worked through COVID, and I am a first responder. We answer life and death calls for service on a daily basis, and we send help to those that are in need. We are a vital part of the police department. We educate citizens and offer alternative resources. We are here twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We want to be valued and deserve a fair wage. It is a struggle financially to live in the city I serve. We are one of the largest communication centers and the largest call volume, and we are paid the least in the Bay Area. We continue to hire and train people the San Jose way, and once they are trained, they lead for cities that are willing to pay them wages we cannot compete with. Those agencies are more than happy to take them after we have trained them. We ask that you please take this into great consideration for fair wages for both police and fire communications. We are your first line when the citizens are in need, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Delphina. A Becker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Aaron Becker. I'm the construction manager and DOT in charge of pavement inspection. I love my job. I'd like to share my personal experience in the unsustainable situation my team is in. My team has been tasked with implementing the will of the residents through the measure T by paving the entire street network for the city of San Jose over the next eight years. I hope you like the amazing amount of work we've accomplished so far. Since I've been with the city for the last four years, my staff has gone from almost fully staffed with thirteen positions to our current level of just four remaining inspectors. I'm the hiring manager for my section, and I can't fill the positions because the common theme is that we don't pay enough compared to surrounding agencies. I've hired inspectors that have either not shown up on their first day or leave after a week. Unfortunately, my hands are tied, and there isn't much I can do to change this. The remaining team still shows up every day despite the overwhelming stress of getting the work done with limited staff. In just the last two weeks, I've lost two more inspectors. Exactly a year ago, my team was awarded the city manager's unsung heroes award as we never stopped working, even when the entire world was basically shut down for three months in March, April, and May. It kind of rings hollow now when something more tangible can be done for us, but the offer on the table is below acceptable. The comments tonight are rare and honest, are a rare and honest insight into our challenges from a diverse workforce that always put their heads down and gets the job done. Please do the right thing and take action on paying us a fair and competitive wage to attract and retain workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. Aaron was our final speaker this evening. I want to thank all the members of the community who came out to speak and the many city workers who came out to speak. I think all of us hear your frustration very clearly. We have a process for negotiating contracts, and I'm confident through that negotiating process, we're going to get to something that both parties will feel is fair, and there's still more work to be done, and we look forward to supporting that process, that fair process at the at the bargaining table. But I appreciate all the extraordinary work that our city employees have done over the last year and a half in particular, since this pandemic. I appreciate there's been a lot of sacrifice, a lot of risk, and I know that I know that all my colleagues feel the same way. In any event, this this meeting will conclude now. We're going to reconvene tomorrow. Our open session will begin at one thirty, I believe. And we look forward to I'm sorry.
Eleven AM.
Oh, forgive me. Thank you. The open session will be eleven AM. Thank you. We're gonna have a closed session earlier in the morning, and then we'll start up at eleven AM. Thank you for that, Henry. All right, meetings adjourned.